Hi. We are, don't know why. You have not changed to us. The gallery.
Steve Biella is up there.
There's no, not the speaker, so I'm gonna keep it at the gallery. Be good?
Good evening, my name is Diane Jorsey, I'm the vice chairwoman and acting chair this evening of the Planning and zoning Commission. This meeting may be attended in person or by remote video or telephone conference. Zoom conference access information was provided for the commission members, applicants, and other interested persons to participate and noticed on the agenda posted on the town website. For all those attending, I would ask that you mute yourselves if you are able, so that we don't get any background noise. There are two very important reminders, first, each time you speak, you must state your name and title for the record. Second, we must be careful not to speak over one another, so that everyone who is listening can hear to what is being said, and we have a clear record. For this reason, as necessary, when it comes time for commission members to comment and ask questions about a particular agenda item, before any action is taken, and then to vote on that agenda item, our planner Maureen Justy will call the role as needed. Also, the regular meeting is being recorded, and the recording will be posted on the town's website. I'm now gonna ask that Maureen take attendance by following the rule, thank you.
John Michael O'Brien, I believe. Sandra Capola.
Here.
Diane Jorsey.
Here.
Timothy Sigma.
Here.
Ryan Rogan.
Here.
Scott Hamel.
Here.
Alternate Peter Zarabosa, that's to be excused. Alternate Andrew Lain Manning. We do not see him on. Steve Biella Jr., alternate. See him, I see him connected, you're muted, Steve.
Unmuted, Steve.
Steve Biella, unmute yourself, please.
Chairman Bailey. Will be trying to join, maybe late. Steve, are you on? Chris, can you confirm you can hear us?
Looks like Chris is talking, but he's muted.
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, thank you. So, either Steve stepped away from his computer for a minute while he's on, we can ask again in a minute or two. No, or off until.
Well, if he's actually, he should be seated for the.
Can you mean that, the commission?
He was just talking, Steve, you're muted if you're talking.
Oh, and John has joined as well.
Hi, John. Hey, sorry guys, got stuck in traffic, I'm high four. I know, you feel sorry for me, don't you? Have you called this meeting to order yet, Diane?
Yeah.
Sorry, don't interrupt, go ahead, you're doing a great job.
Eighty-one today down there?
Huh?
Eighty-one degrees down there?
Eighty-one.
Eighty-one.
Tomorrow's gonna be eighty-five, woo-hoo.
Trying to settle out some technical issues right now, John.
Okay, well, go ahead and do your thing.
All right, well, just maybe between each items, ask if Steve is, yeah, he can participate, make sure he unmutes.
That would be good. Oh, now he's unmuted. You're here, Steve. Oh, we can't hear him, maybe is the issue. He's muted again. Yeah, okay. Move on with the agenda. The first item on the agenda is the review of minutes from February 3rd, does anybody have any comments or a notion to make motion?
Madam Chairman, I would like to make a motion to accept the minutes.
Motion by Chairman Bailey to accept for a second.
I'll second the motion.
Seconded by Brian Rogan. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Nobody opposed, so, and one extension, I assume, Mr. Bailey. Next item on the agenda, scheduling of public hearings. Special permit applications of Sebastian Melisfini for properties at 202 through 212 Mill Street, map 10-3, block 86, lots 5 and 5A, with a unified site plan for A residential apartments at 212 Mill Street, B, a fast food restaurant at 202 Mill Street, C, the addition of a drive-through lane at 202 Mill Street. Suggested date for public hearing is April 7th, 2022, or April 17th, 2022.
We have for.
You know, we've got a number of public hearings scheduled, and I was just concerned of the crunching as they get continued from one meeting to the next, as we approach meetings, we end up with others that have been continued, so I was somewhat concerned with that, we do have, I believe it's two additional public hearings coming up on our schedule, and if there were to be one second, I have it on the screen, but. So.
I don't know.
So, I think if you were to schedule it for April 7th, with the possibility, it would be postponed to 17th, we'd keep applicants moving along, but. But give us that possibility of the 17th, could be more comfortable with the 17th, that's.
I motion for on April 17th.
April 17th. Commissioner Sigma, does the motion, is there a second?
Madam Chair, can I ask a question, please? The 17th of April, is that not Holy Week, or is that after the Holy Week? I can't remember what day Easter is on.
Seventeen.
Easter is the seventeenth?
Yeah, I think so.
Wrong date.
No, Easter's on Sunday.
I think it's the 21st, that should be April 21st, not April 17th.
Okay, all right, so the typo was for the 17th, thank you, and so.
Our meetings in April, April 7th and April 21st.
I motion for April 21st.
All right, I'll have them.
I'll second the motion.
And we have a motion for the 21st. Commissioner Sigma, seconded by Commissioner Rogan, those in favor? Aye, John, that was an aye for you.
Yes, please.
Next item on the agenda is bond reductions and releases. Request of Patrick DePinto for a bond release, Alling Street and Sterling Drive.
So, to give you a little bit of background, if I may, the town is working to go through old bonds that we've had filed for many years. This is one of those bonds, so engineering is methodically inspecting the items that were held in the bonds to make sure that they are, that the items in the bonds have been complied with, and we did get confirmation from engineering, I think it's in your supplemental package, it might be in the regular package, that engineering has indicated that both of these bonds can be released. We do have a third bond that was on the draft that Jeff I sent you, and that one is not prepared for release yet, so we are holding off on scheduling that.
So, shall we combine the items, is that easier, or just one of them?
I would suggest do it one at a time, so that we have the record in both.
Motion to release bond for Alling Street and Sterling Drive.
For a second?
Second.
Thank you. Motion by Commissioner Sigma, seconded by Sandra Capola, to approve release of the bond at Alling Street and Sterling Drive. Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion to release bond lot 11, block 71 Norton Road, subdivision.
I'll second.
So, this is for the next item on the agenda, request of Patrick DePinto for a bond release, lot 11, block 71 Norton Road, subdivision. Motion to release the bond made by Commissioner Sigma, seconded by Sandra Capola, those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Next item on the agenda, commission business. In accordance with Connecticut general statutes, section 8-24, review and recommendations to town council regarding leasing of space at Harvard School, 139 Grove Street, East Berlin, and McGee School, 899 Norton Road, for YMCA daycare programs pending TC 3122, 2022. And, so, do we have some new questions?
So, this is for, we have the BOE Board of Education Director of Facilities, this I have this director of operations, Jeff Kugner here, who is going to explain how they want to use the building. In your package, you received the item presented to town council, and then we have supplemented it since with the Board of Ed to show maps that show the areas to be used and how the operational work of the daycare, and I'm gonna try to share those on the screen, but I think Jeff probably is better equipped to give those the summary, and he is here.
Please join us, Jeff.
Good evening, members of the commission, Jeff Kugner, the director of operations for the Berlin Public Schools. I'm here today relative to the 8-24 recommendation and report that the planning commission has to do relative to the state statute that I'm sure you know says that when the public, when the town leases any of its space, buildings or land or anything else, we have to come up with one or two, so that's what kicks this off to see. Maureen asked me if I would give you a little background on the project, so you know what we're doing over there. Back a number of months ago, the Board of Ed was approached, the panel was approached, approached by the YMCA, saying that they were moving around some of their things, and they weren't gonna be using one of the facilities they had, and it just so happens that one of the facilities is down on Main Street, 362 Main Street is the former YMCA building next to the bank, also the former post office, for those people that are on town for a while. We, the Board of Ed, were using a back room in that building for a while to start up what is called the Transition Academy. Transition Academy is something we, the Board of Ed, is mandated to do for students, special ed students usually, from ages 18 to 22. So, it's an extension of our education, which is, like I said, mandated. We don't do it at the high school, because we thought it was much better situation for the students who learned a lot of life schools and life skills and things like that, to be somewhere separate from where they just graduated from, so they wouldn't do it together. So, it's a good model that we're building in Berlin here. What we asked about the YMCA is that if there was a man that we could actually lease the entire building, because we're now doing the Transition Academy along with Cromwell, it's now gonna be called the Central Connecticut Transition Academy, but we needed more space, so we were gonna start looking around town for more space, started to set this up. So, all this kinda came together at one time, the YMCA didn't want to go back to reusing their former building, they were looking for other space, we have space in, originally in high school, that we offered to consider doing this. And we know it's a complementary use to education, daycare, and so forth. We asked a lot of questions, got a lot of information, and lo and behold, jumping ahead, we didn't do it, ended up doing it at the high school, because there was a corporation council thought there might have been some level of timing restriction, because they haven't closed off the funding for the high school the other day, so they didn't want to start changing any of the uses or that nature, which was very smart. We then went and looked at some of the other buildings along with the Y. We landed on putting some of their daycare operations in Hubbard School, which I'll explain, and some in McGee. So, you've got two sites that we're leasing. A little bit about the lease, it is a normal lease, we, I didn't bring all the lease documents, they're very large, I talked to Maureen, you didn't think you wanted to go for the leaseship, right? But what the summary of the leases are is that we have agreed to, all agreed upon, and it's actually the town, the Board of Ed, excuse me, town, the Board of Ed, and the YMCA, obviously it's town's property, the Board of Ed is one of the users of the property, and of course, the less even for this portion of the building, the YMCA, the merit of the YMCA. They wanna put the daycare facility in there. We thought it was a good idea for a lot of reasons, that they love the location naturally, it's our education facility, we got the space. So, we went on to looking at what we really had to do, and what the Y really had to do to get the appropriate licenses and approvals, because daycare is very regulated, as you can imagine. But, our school meets anyways, so we only had to do things, you know, plenty of things that are in the rooms that we are leasing. It's nothing other than the rooms themselves, excuse me. What a time to get hoarse. So, we have some rooms at Hubbard, there's approximately, there's one classroom at Hubbard that is about, matter of fact, exactly 1,333 square feet, that's pretty big. We have three classrooms that we're using, McGee, this is about 2,400 square feet. It just so happens that it's about, that's about the same square footage, within a few feet of what this building is, that we're gonna be leasing from the YMCA. As we went through to put together the deal, as we went forward, we had decided on a number of things, but the first thing was, would we get through the regulations? There was a cooperative effort with the town, the building department, the fire marshal, on the licensing from the state of Connecticut for the daycare, daycare, and so on, that worked very well, it was very cooperative, we had those things in place. We also had to have a design, some improvements done to McGee and to Hubbard. We had actually, town, architects and engineers, not employees, but professionals, put together the plans and specs, so we made sure that our building met all the appropriate zoning regulations, zoning regulations, but maybe the building regulations most. And, so that was done, the town decided that since it was this town's building, even though the YMCA is paying, paying for all the improvements that are going on at Hubbard and Willard, we thought it was appropriate that the town actually was in control of the design, and also did the bidding of contracts, and also the whole contracts, the administration of the construction. So, really, we're doing the construction along with their money, making sure it's on what it needs to be. The lease portion of it, obviously, you've gotta have, from a legal standpoint, leases when they're gonna be using the facilities, and we are gonna be leasing, it's not a pro- duty, we are going to be leasing the entire building down 362 Main Street. The reason I mention that is that the lease price, and I think it's good to know from commission members and public officials, is that each one of us is going to be paying a zero rent, because we're really, they're giving us the building for nothing, from a rent standpoint, we're giving them the facility for nothing, but of course, they paid for all the improvements that go forward. There's a number of things in leases that, you know, this could be terminated for this, and it's a swap, if one terminates, the other one terminates, and a lot of things that myself and the corporation council, the corporation council has reviewed all these leases, obviously, and has approved them. Just for general information, the lease is a 10-year lease with an option to extend to another five, but like I said, we made sure that if the town itself, the Board of Ed, needed the space back, we don't anticipate it, but during that period, but if we needed the space back, there's ways to change it, get out, or think out, and this is not the time to go back and use it for the Berlin school. So, we thought that was a good situation. Let's see, what else would you want to know here, just for conversation's sake, there's about $256,000 worth of improvements being done at Hubbard, excuse me, at McGee, and about $49,000, almost $50,000 being done at Hubbard. And as I said, the YMCA is financing all that, or at least giving them money, funding anyways. Anything else you'd like to, let me see, well, I can give you some other information. The number of students, maximum number of students allowed at McGee will be 52 students with 12 staff members, and Hubbard would be 30 students and 6 staff members. And we wanted to make sure all that stuff is in a lease, so we get what we negotiated with the buildings very well, and be complimentary to the school. What you really have in front of you today is that the lease, not the lease itself to approve, but basically that the town wants to lease the facility for its use. We believe that it's the use at the two schools of this leasing to the YMCA is complimentary to the school activity, and is for the town, our plan of development. We think it's, like I said, it's a good use in all parts. One of the things that, right in the morning, was suggesting, I don't know, do you want me to go through access and now, or would you like to do something else on maybe 824 first?
I just like to make an explanation of the 824, particularly for the New York members, or anyone who may not have come down with an 824 before, section 824 of the Connecticut general statutes require the planning and zoning commission give a referral to the town council on certain municipal improvements, and one of the categories includes leasing of schools. So, there you have it, town council, when the item was read, and when the term was written, it was pending town council approval, or referral to the planning and zoning commission on Tuesday night. Tuesday night, they did make that referral to the commission, and that's an item in your supplemental packet that says town of Berlin at the top of resolution, that's the town council referring, the 824 to you, with the addition of traffic, or the parent drop-off area, et cetera. I asked that the Board of Ed provide what you see on your screen now, which is the Hubbard School, kind of an indication of how it will work, and where the space is in relation to flow of traffic, people moving, moving throughout the site. So, I think that's what Mr. Kugner will probably describe now, at each of the sites.
It's a, it's very important, and obviously, to the Board of Ed and the superintendent, everybody else, is that if we're gonna be doing something in the schools, we wanna make sure that safe access, certainly safe for parent drop-off, in the right spot for making sure that the daycare kids are not mixed with the actual students. So, what we had to design is, the little spots you see there are the places donated for the YMCA, this is drawn in the building, like I said, it's just one classroom, it will, it will have its own door access right out to the side. It won't be walking to the school, it won't be me entering around, it won't be rubbing elbows with the rest of the students in there, and that's the way really daycare, you know, should be done, so it's gonna have a door access right out to the front, where it says where the drop-off is. It's, I think it's important to note that the times that daycare students are dropped off are not the same times that there's any bus drop-offs or pickups in Hubbard School, so we're not gonna be talking about that, mixing traffic and so on and so forth. It's designed, and this is the way they work, this is that there will be someone at the Y that will be receiving the kids and walking around. It's designed, and this is the way they work, is that there will be someone at the Y that will be receiving the kids and walking around. Yeah, so we want to make sure that that was done correctly. Hubbard's pretty simple. There's only one way in and one way out. So really, they will be, parents drop off will be driving in, stopping in that general area, letting out their child. Someone will leave them be it there and they'll open the door and let them in because the door's right there. And then they will, so it's a pretty simple item at Hubbard. The McGee, bringing that up, a little bit different because McGee's a much bigger facility. That's the reason we were able to put a bigger daycare facility there. We looked around at a couple of different spots at McGee. The one we landed on was one is to the rear of the building, on the second floor, but the second floor up in the back of McGee is at ground level. There's also separate entrance right into the classroom. A walkway over to that entrance, but it's still direct access out. The access in for drop-off is using the driveway that goes around the back of the building, which is a regular driveway that has, I know has been approved by the fire marshal and so on and so forth already. It's not anything new. We will have them come in, drop off there and then leave. There's plenty of room to move around there. We'll change it a little bit. Not the actual parking, because there should be no parking up there anyways. It's left at that second part. Some of the facility, once in a while, park up in the area. This is nothing there, but we will be doing some signage and a few other things and anything else that Maureen and the rest of the town staff would like to have up there as a turnaround. So it's really in and out, and same thing, not really at the same time that buses and buses and student drop-off are for McGee. The four kids go through, I know it very well. You have to come from way up on the top of that driveway up there and go all the way around, then you drop off on the beginning of the building, right up in that area. So there's no, even if they did do it at the same time, which it really isn't, daycare, they tell us, come between 6:30 and 7:30 in the morning and they get picked up at 5:30 to 6:00 in the evening. So daycare, I mean, McGee is, is, you know, a something after 7 o'clock, 7:30, and then of course, these kids coming in and out most of the time. But like I said, the access and the entrances and everything, any of that student stuff is way over the other side. So which means if a student drop off, that's over there. There shouldn't be any things at all. We think it's a very safe situation and we were very concerned. It wasn't just finding space in the building. It was finding space that was good and adequate for daycare with safety access and drop off of kids. The work that's being done in the classrooms are things that are mandated, other than what they bring in for teaching naturally, you know, desks and everything else. It's mandated by the state, depending on how many kids you have there, depending on how many bathrooms you have to have, how many seats you have to have. It's totally included in that women and classroom area. There's nothing else in the, in the school that they're using. So from, like I said, from access, you know, you think it's done well, certainly. Maureen, need to know anything else or want us to do anything else? It's a town project, so we.
We've got a couple of questions. You said Hubbard School's one door in, one door out. There's not going to be emergency exit through this door?
Well, oh, there are doors to go into this. Yes. Again, we had everything checked. There's two doors into the area to go out into the great school. We're just not using that for access.
So there'll be emergency doors or whatever?
Oh, Hubbard has a lot of ways in and out. I mean, it's all, you can get to any of it. It's just that the unit itself is not going to be using that at the top.
In chocolate. And McGee, the same thing. And is there any cost to town, they go be remodeling the YMCA and Main Street?
The lease that we have negotiated, we had a an outside firm committed to a safety check on everything that was needed, improvements, future improvements, heating systems, everything else. They gave us a full list and all report because we wanted to make sure we were getting into something that wasn't going to cost us a lot of money or really cause problems. We have a whole list of, actually, relative to minor improvements that they've agreed to do in the lease. They're doing those as the landlord and landlord. As a matter of fact, they put two and four in there. So it's what we, we've been working on this for a while. A lot of people ask a lot of questions and we've got most from it, not all of them, so.
What's the use of the YMCA building on Main Street?
Now?
No, once you take your own.
Oh, the Transition Academy, I was talking to you about earlier. It's going to be having the 18, 22-year-olds in there being taught life skills and also it's an interesting program. It's growing in the state because the state mandate is more of a daycare, these older students. You don't have a choice. If they want to go, they have to. So it's going to have, let's see, I think it started out last year with about seven students, but this year it's got about 11. Next year, we're anticipating most of the students because we're doing the Cromwell also. Cromwell obviously pays for, that we pay for part of the operation costs.
So both Hubbard, McGee and YMCA on Main Street next to West Street Bank will all be used for the transition?
No, no, no.
That's what.
The Transition Academy is only going to be in the YMCA lease to the Board of Ed. That's that. That's not in front of you today. That's, I'm just explaining why we're doing McGee and Hubbard. We're doing it kind of exchange of properties. So we said money, they said money. So Transition Academy is at the former post office building of the YMCA, building on Main Street. It wouldn't have anything to do with what we do with daycare and YMCA at
Yes, but I'm confused. Are they giving, you said swaps, or are they giving new building on Main Street?
Yeah, oh, yes.
And what's the intended use of that?
Okay.
That's.
That's the Transition Academy.
Okay.
And the other two, the two that were letting in new space in the buildings is there YMCA daycare.
Okay.
So they're operating all of that and providing staff and doing everything to the daycare. That's what the leases are you're talking about today. I just wanted to explain to you that one of the reasons why we're leasing the building is we're getting getting their building for other educational uses.
Where are they currently doing that Transition Academy?
They were doing it in a back room in this, in this 362 Main Street. But it's not large enough for what they want to do. Plus, like I said, we're expanding along the we have now bought vans down there. What happens, it's interesting. Kind of a program. We have vans that actually pick up the students and belong with teachers. And they bring the students to stores, businesses in Berlin and around, and they learn how to become interns and learn how to they also are brought to the shopping, so they learn how to buy the stuff, do whatever, just different life skills. Really, the life skills that can blend into the community as they become.
So. And then so the two things at the McGee Middle School and Hubbard will be just be regular daycare?
Regular daycare.
Anybody else here have questions?
Madam Chair, Maureen, can I ask a question?
I was just going to ask you, John, if you had questions.
All right, thank you. I missed, I missed part of the presentation because it was a little bit warbly what the applicant was presenting, at least here on this room. So I might be done in my questions, but I guess my concern is that I'm seeing the pictures of Hubbard and I'm seeing the pictures of McGee and the drop-offs, but where are the students going to be? I mean, what part of the school are they going to be in?
So this morning, speaking, just because I think it'll be easier while I'm using the screen. This yellow circle is the area within the school, within McGee Middle School, up in the upper, upper rear west side of the property. There's some classroom space that will be utilized with an exterior door out to this walkway. It goes along the westerly side of the building towards the parking area that, the drop-off area that they're proposing to use. That's at McGee. At Hubbard, they'll be using this area in approximation of the yellow circle on the plan in the front of the building. And I think that's one classroom size. That's one classroom size that they're using within Hubbard School and they're adding a door to the outside so that the daycare students can go directly into the school as opposed, and at both schools, instead of going through the hallways where the elementary students will be or the middle school students.
All right, because on both of those maps, it's just marked as the yellow entrance being a yellow entrance, I mean, a daycare entrance. So are we going to be utilizing classroom space that is existing?
Yeah, yeah. They're existing classrooms. They're just not utilized. They're not needed for the students that are in Hubbard at the moment. So they're school classrooms, but they get.
Oh, okay. As far as the cost or liability, does that rest with the Y or does it rest with the town of Berlin?
Yes, no, it's, as I mentioned earlier, I apologize for not speaking clearly. The, all the cost of the improvements to the classrooms that are being used in both places is approximated at about $300,000. The YMCA is paying for all the improvements. That, those projects have been designed by architects that work for the Board of Ed. They, the contracts themselves and the construction are going to be do, going to be done with contracts that were bid by the town of Berlin and the construction administration and design plans are all controlled by the town itself because of course it's a school.
Okay, but the liability aspect, if something should happen to one of your students, who's liable? Is that going to be the Board of Ed and the town of Berlin?
No, it's like, it's like any other leases. They.
That's what I'm afraid of.
No, but we have a full-blown lease and the tenant itself has to provide the appropriate insurances as a tenant, liability, hold armlessness. And we, of course, from, since it's already a school, we have all the coverage necessary to take care of anything. Whatever happened anyways, if anybody came our way, just like for regular students, it's already set up in that matter for the insurance and for risk and liability. As I said, you might have not heard, I've had the Corporation Council review all of this because we realized the leases have to be approved by the town council and the Board of Ed. So they've been looked at legally for risk.
Okay. All right, and the improvements or whatever are going to be carried by the YMCA?
Correct. They're going to be paid for by the YMCA and they're going to be constructed by contractors that have been hired by the town.
Okay, and at this point, if, as far as you launching the project at Hubbard School, you're looking at you, I believe you said there was going to be like a total of 52 students?
That's, that's it. I'll read it again. There's a, the maximum students going to be allowed by the licensing and everything else that was done for the daycare. 52 students at McGee. Doesn't mean you're going to start with that. This is just from a licensing standpoint. 52 students, 12 staff members, and at Hubbard, 30 students, 6 staff members. And again, it is very regulated per square foot from the state of Connecticut for daycare facilities.
Yeah, because I would, I would think that if you were looking at 52 students, you're looking at at least two classrooms. I didn't realize that we had that kind of space available at the school.
Actually, at McGee, it's, it's three classrooms that have been put together, adjacent classrooms that have been put together. We'll have an entrance and exit right out to the back door.
Okay, thank you. No further questions, Madam Chair?
Thanks, John. Steve Biella, I don't know if you have questions or not. Let us know that you at least communicate.
Again, Steve, you are showing as unmuting, but maybe your volume is down? Or your microphone is off?
I'll give Steve another minute. I have a couple of questions. If you would indulge me, please. What are the age ranges of the kids that are going to be in the daycares?
There is going to be, what a range is they call preschool, you know, which is the same ages as preschool in many of the schools. And we have preschool over at McGee and so on and so forth. And then one of the areas, the Hubbard area, I believe, is going to be used for the younger, younger kids. They had a breakup. They have, they have like three sections. They have younger kids than they have infants, and they have younger kids that have preschool. They're spreading those around in that area, but they have to be inside the interior area. They are mostly separate. That's the way they have to do it by, by license.
And so for the daycares themselves, the hours of operation are going to be what?
We have in the lease, let me make sure I. I think it is from 6:30 to 6:30, Monday through Friday, is the time that they're going to, their lease is going to be effective? Yes.
And then the school hours for each school?
Well, the school hours for the elementary schools are all the same, I believe. The children come in. I think they have to start class by 8:40 or probably 40, and then they get out of school around 3:30. So that would be Hubbard. McGee goes in a little bit earlier. They go in at 7:30 and then they get out somewhere around 2:30 possibly. Sorry. I think I know by geography, so. Somewhere around that area.
I, I guess I'm, for me, I'm just struggling with the traffic patterns and the potential timeframes of, you know, of drop-off. So it is kind of close.
Well, I thought, what I, what I said, you know, are you talking about traffic out on the main, out on the main street or in the actual?
No, like on the, on the McGee diagram, the point of conflict where the parents would be making that left turn, that curve to go up to the back of the school is where the buses are going to be coming out after dropping kids off in the morning. So I just see that as like a potential point of conflict with the parents, the drop-offs and the buses leaving from the drop-offs in the morning.
You know, like I said, we, we, we did look at that. There's, there's already a parking lot there. So people take that turn and come into that, not students or anybody else, it's staff, I assume, from the schools that use that, and other principals. Since they're, we've got security people. So, I mean, the traffic pattern is already that way anyways. It certainly works. It's not a conflict because people come out and go in all the time over there. I think that the times are going to be different. That's the way we're looking at it anyways, from what we're told from the Y where the Y goes in. And like I said, the buses are, are not dropping off naturally in that area. They, they may have to come out that exit. There's a lot of cars, I agree with you. There's a lot of cars at McGee anyways, but most of them are way up on the other side where they do all the, where they make the car's permit. If you, if you have to drop off kids at McGee, you can't take that. You, you have to go straight, go back around and line up and do it then.
Right, right.
You don't get, you don't get to come all the way up to this curb and out. There's another entry, there's another left to get you down the main.
Well, no, I, yeah, I remember that. It's just that right at that point, the 7:30 timeframe would be when the buses are exiting to start their next route as you're coming to the end of your drop-off period. That you said was like 6:30, 7:30. So I still see that as a potential point of conflict. But, and so the daycare would be open year-round?
Yes.
Not closed during the summertime when the schools close? And, and the kids would not use the grounds outside? They're going to be inside all the time?
There is a part of the lease that they haven't been, the areas have not been chosen yet. But we have to, from a state standpoint, at least YMCA has to, from a state standpoint, have to provide a small outside area for the kids to go out of the building. And nothing to do with jungle gyms or anything like that, just a small outside building. So out of building, a small outside area. There's an area that would be fenced, there would be grass. And they would walk in and out at both schools. I can't tell you where those are going to be yet. You can be sure they're going to be in a safe place. It's out of the way from everything else because remember, these are old kids. YMCA is very, YMCA is a licensed operation. They have to have, you know, everything that they need to do to keep their licenses and they're very concerned that all those regulations.
Steve Biella, do you have communication with us? Do you have any questions?
If you're trying to communicate, perhaps you use the chat. You can't hear you if you're trying to talk. What I can. It's another option.
Does anybody else have any questions?
Yes, well, just, um, just to clear, as Berlin grows, as Berlin grows, you said there is a way out of leasing this space? Um, if you need to have those classrooms.
Either one of the parties has a termination clause. And, and now there's things that happen if you terminate, obviously, if you terminate, the Board of Ed was about to terminate the lease two months after we were in, then there's something in the lease that talks about how YMCA may get some repressio for the improvements they put in and so on and so forth. Because it would be a terrible, terrible deal for them, they put in $300,000. So there's that kind of stuff that takes care of everybody. If they decided that they wanted for some odd reason, 362 back again, um, then, you know, we have time to get out of there, but we wouldn't be paying anything anyways, we'd be gone. So it's pretty, again, we had to have a lot of people look at, not only the economics of this, and the square footage that is being, it's not really being swapped, the square footage is going to be used, it's just about the same, so it's reasonable, we believe. Actually, the, the building down on 362 Main Street is, is a, is a perfect building for what we need. That also comes with not only the building, but it comes with land in the back. Um, it's got some open areas to be out in that area, it used to have some, some jungle gym stuff or daycare, I don't know exactly what's going to happen with what. We don't need that for the, for the transition academy, obviously, but they're thinking about putting little picnic areas back in there things for the, with the way that the older kids can use things. It also has a driveway, it also has some parking. For what we need for the transition academy, it's, it's, uh, of course, there's a director of transition of this uh, program, Lynn Holley, uh, was director of all of pupil services, she's the one that chose the site. Uh, we're very, very excited about it, and I said right when we started to get going, with the crumble lastest that they come in and, and partially pay for what we do for operations and vans and things like that, so it's, it's a good site, and again, we were already operating there in the back when we first started the project. So it's, and we think we're, I, I will tell you, I've been in a lot of negotiations on this, and they were, and they were, they were good to be in because the right people were there from, from the town and everywhere else, but, um, everybody's pretty pleased on both sides, how this is going to work out. The facilities of McGee and Hubbard are great facilities for the kids and, and the great, great spots, very friendly, have daycare and 362 is going to be a, a great, further developed area for us. We wanted to make sure the leases were long enough, believe me, we're, it was the YMCA that said we, we were going to do them a little shorter, just because, you know, particularly the reason they started out at five, but uh, we anticipated that the improvements that the YMCA was going to have to do at Hubbard and, or pay or at least fund at Hubbard, you were going to be about $100,000. And when we got into it with all the licensing people, all the, uh, building officials, everything else, it's not three times that high. So what we negotiated was to give them longer leases. And we get the longer leases, we get a longer lease time, 362.
Mr. Sigma, that you're looking at.
Yeah, yes, I, I think that, uh, I am concerned with that traffic with McGee uh, in and out of that driveway there, the teacher's parking lot, I call it. Uh, there's conflict, potential conflict there, and maybe it means a, a yield sign from traffic coming from north to, to, uh, uh, Norton Road, uh, that there's a yield sign there, westward, yields of traffic, left, right, whatever. Uh, those enters next to that driveway there, or stop signs.
Yeah, I, I can't say that, that we realize the bus, buses that come in there, we're in transportation, um, they're under control on the Board of Ed and a contract, actually on the one that does that, but with, with the Board. If we had to put a yield sign for the buses coming out of there, and they can make the buses do whatever, we can do that.
Yeah, the, the, yeah, the, uh, entrance exit to the teachers parking lot, you assign buses out to the traffic.
Uh, Maureen, I think you have something to contribute also.
So first I want to say that Steve Biella has noted that he has no contact at this time, so share that. Um, but, um, so what we found from the staff level is a bit of concern with this upper parking lot at McGee is a loading dock area used for the cafeteria deliveries, um, and probably maintenance and other vehicles, so, um, changing the traffic pattern up there would not necessarily facilitate those operations working properly, however, um, the Board of Ed is ensuring us that those conflict of times won't be a, a matter of, those arranged deliveries oftentimes. However, I'd suggest that pavement markings be installed so that, I'll follow my little cursor, but so, you know, mom, I'm picking up mom, I'm a mom, okay, flies up the hill, because of course they're not in a hurry to get anywhere and come straight in while this mom is pulling out backwards. And instead, that some pavement markings and/or directional signage get installed, um, to the satisfaction of engineering, the traffic officer, and my department. That would be my suggestion, and, uh, while an A24 may not normally have those, by putting on some of these items and recommendations, at this point, it will facilitate the Board of Ed not needing to have a second line approval for an amendment. Instead, grab it into this and to facilitate timing points.
Mom, might be putting on the makeup still, they're packing out and stuff. They had a little word.
Naturally, don't read that.
Can we do a motion to approve the A24 recommendation to the Town Council?
What's that, on, on the markers? What's that, how it's on the markers?
Yes, with the markers and the mark and the yield sign.
Hey, uh, Mr. Sigma, is the motion, is there a second?
I'll say it.
Uh, we have, uh, second from Mr. Rookin, uh, all of those in favor?
Aye, aye.
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 All right, can you hear me now?
You can hear him.
Hey, perfect.
John?
Oh, um, it's an A24, okay, aye. I, I just, I have some issues with that, but, um, as, as the decision really rests with the console, I, that's my vote.
I'm with you, John.
I know, it's not, it's not my favorite, but that's okay.
Um, okay, so, um, we have, so that's all set, uh, next on the agenda.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Uh, next on the agenda, discussion of assigned permit application to 22 Mill Street, Hartford Healthcare uh, for replacement of a freestanding sign.
I can just stop sharing here for one second and give you a brief synopsis of this is a discussion item. We have an assigned permit application that we've been working on with Hartford Healthcare, um, for some time, since Prior Carol leaving the CEO position. Um, they have taken over the operation at Hunter Ambulance on 222 Mill Street, and of course, why not have a sign for their own company? Um, they, the sign that exists there, um, there were two freestanding signs. We found that one of the freestanding signs, we couldn't find any permits or any approvals for, um, and actually questioned its location as well. Um, and so, uh, it's my understanding that Hartford Healthcare is not going to pursue replacing that sign, and they'll be removing it. Um, the other sign is directly in front of the building, and you can see that in the pictures. Um, the property line is very close to the building, and that was shown on the site plan to be right near the property line, that was proved, it got a permit for its location, and where, uh, is going to be the responsibility that to ensure that it is entirely on their property, or that they have the agreement with the state, the state right away is extremely, yeah, it's larger than the adjacent properties in that area, um, it's one of the wider strips, so, uh, it is a replacement in the same position, uh, needing the, the non-conformities that it already had, the sign that had previously been permitted. However, the sign, um, is being proposed to be internally illuminated, but the sign that's there is externally illuminated. Um, I believe it's a wood sign or a wood-like sign that was there, now they're proposing a box sign. Um, and given the design standards being, uh, actually playing zoning commission, staff do not feel comfortable approving an internally illuminated sign. Um, we do have a sign person on, online, I also have some pictures provided, and a package of materials I hope I can bring up. Um, they had modified the background of the sign, um, during our conversations back and forth, when we thought the entire sign was going to be illuminated because the regulations have the um, restriction of one-third white of an illuminated sign, background, illuminated background. However, the background won't be illuminated, it's the outline of the letters that will be eliminated. And we have a sample box sign for you that I could plug in. It's the toy of the week in our office. Um, so, I'm going to first try to pull up the, their meeting materials, if you give me one second. Two. And then I'll plug in the sign. They gave me some materials yesterday. So she's replaced, they, they've re-replaced the sign that you see in your package that has a gray background with this one, a white background. Again, Tracy from the sign company is online, I'm not sharing my screen. This is showing the, the location of the sign, which is right here along the edge of their walkway into their building. Right, Jason to the property line where, uh, there was a new sign that would be required to be taken back. This one was permitted in that location. And there is, um, what I understand to be a similar sign. I'll let Tracy give you more information on that. I'll, I'll plug in this other sign.
This is the one. Yes, yeah, um, Tracy, please join us and, uh, share what you have for us.
Thank you very much, um, I'm Tracy Becker from Sign Pro, Inc. Um, I'm very glad to hear that you like our sample sign, we make a lot of really cool, fun things, um, you know. Uh, right now, we're building some dog kennels for a client. Um, but one of our favorite clients is Hartford, and their new partnership with Hunter's Ambulance has given us an opportunity to, um, brand, you know, dual-brand the current Hunter's Ambulance locations. Um, this particular sign that you're looking at is from the, um, Hunter's, uh, property at 450 West Main Street in Middletown. And this really shows the sign as best as we can, um, this is a, pretty much an exact duplicate of the sign that I'm for 222 Mill Street. I don't know when Maureen's done plugging in the sign, um, so the, the letters are, um, what we call stencil cut backup, so the entire sign, the text, the word text is, uh, cut out of the aluminum, and then Hartford Healthcare and Hunter's Ambulance has black perforated vinyl on it so that it looks black during the day, and then it lights white at night like this. And the emergency medical services, uh, is an all vinyl over the acrylic, so that, we call it a stencil cut backup because you, you stencil cut the aluminum, and then you back it up with the piece of acrylic with the vinyl on it. So that's how those letters are illuminating, and it is just the text that illuminates. And then as far as the Hartford Healthcare, or that we call the pinwheel, we call that a stencil cut push-through. So it's a thicker piece of acrylic that, uh, pushes through the laser cut uh, shape, and the vinyl goes on the front face, and the edges actually are where the light, uh, most of is out, so it looks kind of like a halo effect. Um, but that's why the, uh, logo looks a little bit different than the lettering was. So, um, this, we're proposing, um, is a little bit smaller than the existing sign. Um, the existing sign is, uh, three feet by eight feet, I'm sorry, four feet by seven feet or 28 square feet. The new sign is three feet, which is exactly what this, uh, sign in the photograph is as well. Um, and I don't know if you want to scroll, if you can scroll down to the next couple of pages, um, but while the I actually took some close-up pictures of it, so you could see, um, you know, the aluminum is cut in that black perforated vinyl, and here's a close-up of the logo, so you can see how that acrylic pushes through the aluminum. Um, and then I think the next one is, uh, just shows the orange, you know, uh, the, you know, orange lettering, and then an overall view of that sign. Well, maybe the next one is the overall view of that sign. Okay, so, um, this is another location with a similar where it's more dark, you know, it's a darker evening, so this is really what you see, you don't see that background of the sign at all. You just see the copy and the logo. So the, um, sample sign dropped off, um, the letter I, I believe, is the stencil cut push-through type of letter. So, and we used one of the, um, Hartford Healthcare colors so that you could see what that piece of the logo would, it would be very similar to how it's lighting right there in front of you. And I'm certainly willing to answer any questions if anyone has some.
So my question isn't about the sign as much as it is about the use of the building, is it still only going to be for ambulances? Or are there going to be medical services offered there?
It is just going to be the ambulance, uh, that portion of the business is not changing. Um, as, and there are a couple people here from Hartford Ambulance, um, John Gopian and Kevin Farady, I don't know if they would perhaps like to speak about that. Um, but I don't believe there is any change of use in the business and the property.
Yeah, thank you, Tracy, and, and thank you, Board members, Kevin Farady, I'm the Administrative Director for Hunter's Ambulance, Senior System Director of EMS for Hartford Healthcare, uh, i- i- and that is 100% correct. We are in a multi, I, I believe, as, as Steve Wozni and I were talking about today, we, um, we're in a, a part of an 11-year contract with the town to provide 911 services. Uh, we are the, um, uh, you know, uh, we are designated by the state of Connecticut, DTH Office of EMS as the primary service answering provider, uh, and, uh, you know, definitely have a multi-year ex, you know, part of our contract, I believe there's seven years continuing, and we hope for 70 years after that. Uh, and, you know, we obviously continue the operations as is, uh, as we have since transitioning in June of, uh, last year as a 100% as an EMS, uh, provider, so it is just ambulances, we usually house about anywhere from two to four ambulances there at a time, uh, and the crews come in and out as, as needed.
Okay, so the reason that I ask is, uh, and on the past, we've been rather strict about internally illuminated signs on apartment. And, I mean, if it was an emergency, we're having internally lit sign to help somebody locate your business. I think that might be one thing, seeing as you're going to the person that needs your services. I just don't think it would be fair to everyone else who we've been so strict on this regulation with to allow for the illumination.
Anybody else have questions, comments?
Hi, this is John Gopian. Can you repeat that, uh, the comment, please?
Sure, yeah, in the past, we've been very strict with internally lit signs on apartment, can I add? As far, as far as not allowing them. So like I said, that's why I was asking, use of the building. And ambulances, they go to the person who needs them, it's not like you're having somebody in an emergency need to find your business. And ambulances, they go to the person who needs them. It's not like you're having somebody in an emergency need to find your business. Which is why I was I'm having trouble getting over the point of, you know, trying to be fair with everybody else that we denied in the past. Having internally lit sign on Park Avenue versus what you're proposing. I don't think it's obtrusive, but it's just more of a thing of fairness to me.
If I could just speak to that for one minute. Based on the existing sign being externally entire sign, um, you know, 28 square feet plus the surrounding area is actually illuminated at night. And our stance is that the proposed sign that we're offering with just the text and logo lighting is offering actually much less light pollution and uh, you know, it's much less obtrusive and uh an entirely illuminated, externally illuminated sign.
Did you have a question, Tom?
Are you gonna be having any EMS classes in that building?
We don't have enough space for a classroom in there. So we do have, you know, we do have people obviously coming and out. And we do obviously also, uh, you know, we do have people that will note as as we know, you know, that an ambulance is there. We do have people that do come uh in a medical emergency and they may not be able to make it to the hospital. Uh, they, you know, we have several instances at all of our base locations where people will see the fact that it is in uh, you know, EMS provider location that they will actually stop there and seek uh an emergency response. Uh, and in those cases, obviously, they stop there. The crews are there. If they're not, there's emergency telephones there uh and they activate the 911 uh resource. And that obviously activates, you know, the town and our resources. So but we do not have a classroom space.
The reason I'm asking that is because I was looking for the uh EMS classes for the fire departments and police departments and uh where they could be offered to get the education uh specifically from Harvard Health. Um, and that's gonna be offered to Harvard Health now, uh through Harvard Health.
Yeah, that's a great point. And and actually, that's what uh, you know, Fire Officer Wozni and I were speaking of today. And, you know, our commitment uh since June 1st has actually to been been to, excuse me, increase the amount of community presence that we have uh in all of our communities that we serve. And uh, we're actively looking at um not only um single sponsored, but I I'm, which I'm not a big fan of. I'm more a fan of co-sponsored with the police and fire department, not only to train and educate the members in the uh of the departments, but then also to have joint um community offerings, which we are planning for uh this spring and summer.
Thank you very much. Uh, John, do you have any questions?
Okay, yeah, thank you. No, it's just, everything is ungeschickt here, so I'm out of sorts. I understand the fact that we're trying to be business friendly and I understand the fact that we're also fighting against the headwind, so to speak, because we do have some regulations that are in play. And as it was pointed out, I believe by Commissioner Rogan, these are design signage things that have pretty much been in place for the town to sort of make sure that everyone sort of follows through and doesn't get too wild. And and we have an expectation of our businesses in town and we have held the feet of the fire, you know, to the fire for a lot of those folks. I am curious about the sign, however, so I'll go to the applicant if I may through the chair. And um, the photo that we have, or at least that's been screen shared for me, shows that basically the lettering is white and the background is all black. Um, and then this would be an example of what people would see at night. You're coming on Mill Street, is that correct?
Well, um, I, so I think, um, Maureen, if you could scroll back, I think it's page five of 10. There you go. Yeah, this one. So this is the sign that's uh was installed last week at Weston. Um, and this is like this that we are proposing um for 222 Mill Street. So um, the letters themselves are black, the Hartford Healthcare and Hunter's Ambulance letters are black during the day, but it's a perforated vinyl, so the light shines through the perforations and they appear white at night. Um, and here's in the darkness because it's not illuminated at all. So um, does that help?
Yeah, so what you're saying then is what I'm looking at right now is how the sign appears during the day. However, at night, it appears with just the
So if you scroll back um two more pages, I think to page three. Sorry, Maureen.
I'm actually sorry to have to do this to you, but I need to understand what we're looking at.
No, that I totally understand. So this is what the sign looks like during the day with the black Hartford Healthcare Yes. lettering, the orange emergency medical services, the four color logo and the pink stripe at the bottom. Um, and then at night, all of the background disappears. So the white back it go away and the black letters are viewed as white because the light's coming through the perforation on the vinyl. And the orange letters still appear orange because that's just a translucent vinyl that we're using. Does that explain it for you?
And so basically, if you were to ground light this, you would not get the same effect?
No, actually, if you ground lit it, you would see the entire sign, all of the background, the purple stripe at the bottom. Um, and you know, the area surrounding the sign. So the shrubs and, you know, other things that are within the uh scope of the lamp.
All right, so then going forward, Maureen, the Hartford Healthcare sign that's all black with just the white lettering, what is that about? Yes, that one. So what is this?
So this is a similar sign and it's just a, it a picture that's in the darker portion of the evening. So where you really can't see the background at all, you can't see the pink stripe at the, the purple stripe at the bottom of that sign. You know, the one that I showed you from Meriden was taken at dusk. So you could still white background and the pink, uh, sorry, the pinkish, purplish stripe at the bottom. As it gets darker in the evening, that all disappears and you just have the lettering and the logo that illuminates.
Okay. Will the shape of the sign just be square or are we gonna have it a little bit more scalloped like the old Hunter ambulance? How it sort of fit in with the posted um uh the post with the cap on it, which seemed to complement the building? I guess I'm 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 just again thinking about the design review. And and you know, I'm not opposed to the sign. It's just like we have the building and we have the sign and we seem to have a direct conflict. And I'm I'm not trying to be unfriendly. It's just, I'm trying to keep, I'm trying, I'm I'm trying to make a nice compromise for everybody. And so I I guess I need your help with that.
Okay, I understand. Um, and thank you for asking the question. As it is right now, the brand it's for Hartford Healthcare do say that the signs are supposed to be a rectangular or square uh box. With the very specific, you know, amount of purple things like that. I mean, they do make exceptions on rare occasions um in situations where uh, you know, the the town really pushes back. So
Okay.
I don't, I mean, maybe Kevin could speak to that a bit as well as uh, you know, like I don't know how anxious they are to, you know, totally change the overall look.
Well, I I will say that as a commission, I'm I'm sorry, I don't mean to speak to the commission, but as a commissioner at the end of this evening. I'm very enthusiastic about you guys being here. I think it's great for the town and we really, really want this to work. It's just that we need to be able to to uh reconcile it with our um with our regulations. Because we do have other people, other businesses in town that we've held their feet to the fire to give them, to to make sure we get the best product. So that's, that's the only reason I have the questions that I have. So thank you for taking them.
You're very welcome.
Yeah, I would agree with that. Something like definitely like having in this service to make sure that's true for Berlin. And I personally don't have a problem with the sign. I like that stuff. It's less like pollution. But where uh issue is, is within our own design regulations and precedent that we've set. So it's not really on you. I think what we really have to look at is what proving this is gonna mean everything else on Park Avenue.
Can I, can I ask a question through the chair?
Sure.
That would be to the town plan or how far off are we on this design currently? And it seems that we've had some compromise in the sense that I'm now seeing three separate signs and what this transition is gonna be through the course of the day into the evening. And, you know, I'm I'm not opposed to what I'm seeing on the screen right now for an evening signage. So are we that far off from what we're allowed within the design regs?
Um, so I'll do my best to answer that. Um, but I gotta say, that's uh pretty much why staff was not comfortable making the decision. So that the um, because the commission does um is allowed, is is charged with interpreting the design guidelines that were created by the commission. In your packages, and I don't know if everyone has it, um, but I did include the two pages that I thought from the design guidelines that were the relevant provisions on the sec- second. Item on the lighting page being indirect lighting in the building or pedestal stacks, pedestal signage is preferred over internally illuminated signs. And um on the signage page, um, and these are both in um response directly to the comments you've made, Joan. Or China really is that uh the first one on the signage page, signs should be designed as an integral architectural element of the building at site to which it principally relates. So a proportion and scale, um, et cetera. And I just did not feel comfortable making that interpretation of their proposal. I think it did our previous on enforcement officer. Um, that said, the um Hartford Healthcare has worked to come into compliance with the regulations as far as removing the um second sign and um adapting the white background versus not white background. You do frequently hear that there are illuminated signs on Farmington Avenue. Most of them, um, to the best of my knowledge, have been as time has upgraded existing box signs that are there. And as you all know, with the newer box signs that have gone in, in, they've been replacements for the most part and have reduced that illuminated background to comply with the new regulation um from a couple of years ago, one third white or less background. So we do have some illuminated signs on along the strip of the jump of the CCC zone. But that's where the design guidelines.
Maureen, can I ask one additional question, please? What would happen if we had the signage as is proposed and the twilight sign be lit from the ground up? So outside illumination. And then at night, the illumination goes out and then the inside illumination takes places. I know that sounds really complicated. Would that help?
From those, I'll put on the zoning enforcement officer hat and feel that um having a particular like that with regard to the sign would be challenging to monitor as well as if there are changes to management and or um the sign in the future. They something that doesn't get translated over time and get maintained. Um, if you have an on off button and it's supposed to be left off all the time and a new manager comes in, they then say, hey, look, we have a switch here and they turn it on and then we have that, we we do have that situation at another location. Um, so.
And then, then lastly, and I'll hand it back to the chairperson if I may. I guess Hartford Healthcare Group was interested in the compromise as well. Is that what I was hearing? That they might be, I know that corporate takes a certain look at things and they like to have the signage all universal. However, on all corporations that we've dealt with, there's always seems to be a little bit of flexibility on the corporate side. Have we heard from corporate to see how flexible they can be with the signage?
Yeah, so this is Kevin Ferrari. I I think um and again, we can always look at um the way this top of the shape is. You know, I I think the the compromise, obviously, you know, really also has been with, you know, identifying that hunters did have two very large signs that, you know, did also impede you know, point, you have viewpoints as they're coming in and out of traffic, uh vehicles that were coming in and out of the driveway. We're obviously eliminating that to reduce any risk of uh driver injury or, you know, driver risk coming in and out due to any change in signage. And I think the other, um, one of the other biggest things that we also did is, and I think Tracy pointed us out well, is that the current sign is much larger uh than the than the proposed sign. I think any, anything else we would obviously have to take back.
Can I ask you, Kevin? I'm sorry. And what was, what was the signage and what are, what are you bringing the signage down? You're bringing it down to
Tracy, can you, I forgot the the actual square footage from
So the existing sign is four feet tall by seven feet wide or 28 square feet. And the new sign will be three feet tall and eight feet wide and at 24 square feet. And we're actually of width because we're um spanning the sign over the posts. Because one of the Hartford Healthcare uh design elements is that you can't see any post structure typically.
Oh, they don't like the posts, they don't like the post structures.
Correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you both of, uh, both of you for that. And I'll turn it back over to the chair, Diane.
So uh Steve Biella, do you have any questions at all? Hearing anything?
He said no, no. I heard, I heard a little no.
I I got a question. The sign you showed on up there, uh, Middletown, like you were saying. Was a bright blue during the day and then during the letters in the evening. Uh, the one I'm looking at here, not paperwork, is a cool gray, it says. And then uh the sign, the sign will, the letters will light up, the black letters will light up in the evening. Is that the, what we're trying to do, the cool gray, not the bright blue?
No, no. So I'm sorry, that, um, Maureen, on page five, please. So that sign looks a bit blue only because that's time of day and that's just the lighting in the area. So background of the sign will be white. Um, we had offered gray at one point because uh the previous zoning officer was really adamant that an illuminated a white background, even though that white background didn't illuminate. So that was, you know, we've, you know, I've been back and forth many times with this design and we really are trying to make it work for everyone involved. So this is not a blue sign. This is exactly they're proposing for 222 Mill Street, a white background sign with purple stripe bottom. Hartford Healthcare, Emergency Medical Services and Hunter's Ambulance letters, exactly like that with the Hartford in the upper right hand corner. So like I said, it looks blue just because that's the time of day that the picture was taken.
So can I clarify that a bit? So their original sign they came in with, to the best of my knowledge, was white background, as you see here, and and the current proposal. However, um, the sign permit indicated it was an internally illuminated sign and the sign regulations call for less than one third white background, illuminated white background on signage. The background is not illuminated, so therefore we don't have white illumination here. And that's why they went. And that's why they went to the gray to show that it wasn't white or to change it from being white. But then when it was realized that it's the letters that are illuminating, not the sign itself, not the background illuminating, then that's, that, um, regulation doesn't come into play any longer.
Well, this, this, I think this gray, gray sign is less intrusive than either blue sign we saw in Little Town or the white signs. Uh, this is just, uh, last year, I think. Uh, and then the Harvard Health does light up and the Hunter's Ambulance lights up at night. Uh, but during the day, this is more less intrusive than that. All white sign basically you see, or all blue like that. Let me look at the paperwork.
I would just like to point out that that really is not a blue sign. That is the white sign and it's just the lighting of the day. I mean, you can see kind of behind it, right at dusk, we had just installed the sign in Meriden. And, you know, the day was coming to an end and they wanted to make sure they got a picture of it. So that while it might look blue in this picture, it truly is a white sign.
Okay. Thank you all. Uh, my only observation, uh, I agree with, uh, what Joan pointed out earlier. I do actually like the sign. I think we should, uh, look to perhaps, uh, make some amendments to the existing regulations. Um, taking into consideration that some of the signage design options are, uh, more contemporary these days. Uh, so, um, you know, we need to kind of update what we have. Uh, but I don't think that the sign is very complimentary to the building. And I feel like sign better than the building. But, um, that's my only observation. So does anybody have a notion to make a motion?
That turned back to the gray, uh, of the silver, whatever it is, uh, like gray. Uh, sign that is more complimentary to the way they designed their new ambulances. And with that, that grayish, the light blue in the ambulances. Uh, so I think it's more of a green. Oh, than that white.
Is that a motion?
Yeah, I'm gonna motion that, that I, uh, motion that the sign would be, uh, the, what do they call it? Uh, whatever this gray silver is.
I almost would say, uh, that this should be handled as a text amendment to our design regulations. Then staff can handle it rather than approval.
So, um, if I may, the design, the design guidelines are guidelines, um, for the commission's discretion. So it's, so the one third white is in the zoning regulations. The zoning regulations then refer to the design guidelines and the design guidelines are worded so that the commission does have discretion as guidelines as opposed to a regulation.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Joan.
I'm, I'm sorry, if I may, and I know that, uh, Mr. Zigma is in the midst of a motion. Do you want me to second the motion to approve so I can have a little bit more discussion or?
Uh, no, because the motion has not been completed.
Okay, motion is approved sign, uh, with the cool gray background to see, uh, on the sign. And the, uh, amazing letters of Harvard Care and Hunter's Ambulance.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Like, all right, can I second, but for further discussion, please? Um, just so that I can sort of add on to that because we seem to be fighting with the design of the building versus the design of the design. And I don't want to step on anyone's toes, but it's possible that perhaps Hartford Healthcare can, um, compromise on the shape of the sign. In other words, instead of being just a block, and I know you've come down in size and I think that's great. But can we maybe scallop the top of it? Is there a way to sort of physically sort of change the shape of the sign to complement the building more?
Um, I, I can just speak to that for a second. Um, if we do, uh, change the upper shape of that sign, it would end up being overall larger because the text and, you know, the wording and the spacing that Hartford Healthcare requires, uh, already fills up that three by eight area. Um, and again, that would have to, Hartford Healthcare would have to approve any, uh, change in shape. Um, I am texting with my boss as well, um, and he's texting with some people from Hartford Health. Uh, they are willing to compromise and add some finials to the sign. So, uh, you know.
A finials.
I don't know if that would help. I mean, like the gold finials that are on the existing sign.
Okay.
Willing to do something like that. Um, you know, and that would help.
Okay, but they couldn't go high, we couldn't go a little bit higher on the sign on the, I'm going to call it the white because that's what I'm looking at.
Right.
So go higher on the left and the right and sort of scallop it down and then back up again, or is that, yeah, an impossibility?
Um, well, again, I can't really speak to what Hartford Healthcare would be willing to do. But I mean, if it's just like a gentle slope or something, I mean, we might be able to work at that. Um, but I mean, I realize that the existing Hunter sign is, you know, very scalloped, but, um, honestly, I don't see how that really complements the Tudor building as it is. So, I mean, I realize it's a more historic looking sign.
Okay. I'm, I'm, I'm just trying to get this moving forward.
No, I understand.
And knowing that we can still live with it while we address some text amendments or whatever within the commission. But, all right, Madam Chair, I hand it back to you. But that's a second, I guess.
Um, could I just say one more thing? I'm sorry.
All right. So we have a motion. Um, shall we move the motion or is there a withdrawal of the motion? I would say move the motion.
I, I, I'm going to second the motion.
You did.
Yeah, but I mean,
Yeah.
Is there any other, I mean, I guess, does anyone else? I mean, I don't want to hurt the businesses, but I want to see how much damage is, I mean, ugh, this is a tough one.
Under, under discussion right now.
Yeah.
Is there a way we could make it a monument sign? Because that's what we were doing for a long time. It's a type of monument sign.
There's a motion, either need to, if like continue discussion, we should withdraw the motion.
And then I can reach a second.
I don't know if it's more beneficial than a, as a monument sign.
Motion. Okay. Yeah, Joan said. You know, now that it's proper for me to make a comment on my question while motion is in place, but I do have a comment on, I'll ask comment if it was entertaining. I'm not sure a monument sign would be advisable, um, given its proximity to the property line. We are, according to the site plan, the sign is right up to the property line. And I would be concerned with any construction we have. Posts may cause the need for a, um, either agreement from the state, a survey to show where it actually gets installed, et cetera, and that may be just asking for issues.
And, uh, if I could say anything, I actually think finials would probably make it look worse. Um, so I'd say if anything, keep it as it is. And I think what we're really voting on here is that we're kind of setting a precedent to our guidelines where, you can only look letters are okay. So I think that's what we should consider.
So. Those in favor?
Aye.
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 Steve Biella?
Nay.
Is that I or a nay?
That was, that was an I, right, Steve?
It was a nay.
A nay.
Believe everyone else is an I. Anyone please correct if I'm wrong. So sign as proposed in the motion with a gray background.
Okay. All right, uh, moving on, our next item on the agenda, uh, public hearings. Yes, it did cast.
It did.
Yes.
Very much.
With the gray background.
With the cool gray background.
Yes.
Much.
Cool gray.
I just realized that the sound is coming out of my thing and not out of there. I'm really sorry for that. Let me see if I can. Yeah, we got it. I've been micled off. I'm sorry if, for anyone who had difficulty hearing in the room. Can you hear great?
Okay, are we all set?
All right. Town of Berlin Planning and Zoning Commission Public Hearings Notice. Berlin Planning and Zoning Commission will hold public hearings at its regular meeting Thursday, March 3, 2022 at 7:00 PM in the Town Council Chamber in Berlin Town Hall, 240 Kennedy Road, Berlin, Connecticut. Interested parties may join the meeting and participate in public hearings in person or remotely by video or telephone as provided above. A special permit application of Dr. Dean Martin, O P O, uh, G M, G M P for business offices of Pro Natural Home Care at 1263 Berlin, Turnpike Unit A in the S P dash D D Zone for Berlin Regulations 6C2. B, excavation permit of Stancon LLC for excavation of 1,970 cubic yards, point two acres at lot 17 dash 2 dash 123 dash 10, 401 Berlin Street, East Berlin for Berlin Regulations 10B. Yeah, applications of related meeting materials are available at the Planning and Zoning Department, Berlin Town Hall, 240 Kennedy Road, Berlin, Connecticut. Dated this 15th day of February, 2022, at Berlin, Connecticut, Brian Robin Secretary, Berlin Planning and Zoning Commission. New Britain Herald Classified Advertising slash Legal Notices dates of publication Saturday, February 19th, 2022, Monday, February 20th, 2022.
Thank you. Um, so our agenda is, uh, in a little bit different order than Paul. Uh, the first item on the agenda is excavation permit of Stancon LLC for the excavation of 1,970 cubic yards, uh, point two acres at lot 17 dash 2 dash 133 dash 10, 401 Berlin Street, East Berlin for the Berlin zoning regulations 10B. Sort of somebody here to present.
Yes, thank you. Hi, my name is Carolyn Edwards and I work for Enviro Analytics Group and I am the Senior Managing Engineer for Stancon. Um, did you guys all get my, um, presentation that I sent earlier and my response letter to all the comments?
Well, they, I'm sorry, they received, um, the response to the comments from the town engineer in their pocket. You showed back the copy of the pack, I think, and the three maps, um, showing the, the areas, the three maps that were provided.
Okay, so yesterday I sent, um, a presentation. Let me see if I can share my screen here.
Yeah, it's a, it's a presentation that you wanted me to have for tonight.
Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's, they were not previously distributed because we don't have means to do that today. It'll be getting it. And it'll be your presentation at this meeting.
Okay. So you have that in front of you, so I don't have to share my screen. Okay. So I'm just going to go over that really, really quickly. You, you already summed it up. I mean, we're proposing, we're proposing to conduct, um, excavation, transportation and off-site disposal of contaminated soil to comply with the C T Deep, um, Property Transfer Act. And also just note that the Wetlands and Watercourses Commission approves our, um, application on, uh, at Monday's meeting. Just real quick, I'm going to go over, um, so you have the map that I sent with the presentation earlier, figure number five. Hmm. No, it's not any of these. I sent it yesterday.
Everything.
I sent a map with all of your, your requests and your requirements with the letter that I sent addressing your comments. That's different than these. Can I share my screen with you?
Um, sure. My only concern is that I get it back at the end of the meeting. So that's sometimes just problematic.
Oh, well, I don't want to do that.
Fine, give me your screen.
Okay, um, let's see. One second. Of course, that's if I can figure it out myself.
Make sure at the end you stop your share.
Yeah, sure. Yeah. Um, all right. Okay, can you, uh, see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, I'm just going to go over this, uh, presentation really quickly. I just, uh, pretty much read this page. So I just want to go to this map. I give you a quick breakdown of the, the construction sequence. I, uh, think you're probably already pretty familiar, um, because we've been back and forth and I got to thank Maureen. She's been so helpful with all of this. But I'm just going to run through it real quick. So, um, we're proposing three separate areas of excavation and one area of in situ in the soil mixing of, um, a, uh, chemical to help get rid of the benzoinettes in the soil there. So first of all, we're just going to go out there and mark all the excavations. And after we do that, we'll set up all the, the erosion and sediment control that, um, you guys recommended, everything on the riverside of each excavation and along that entire portion of, uh, of A O C three here. So this blue line with the dots on it, that's all silt fins. So we have silt prints in front of each excavation. So after that, we will construct, construct a temporary soil containment area. And I know that was part of the concern, um, in one of the comments. So this will be the, the soil containment area, which will be underlined with plastic and surrounded with coil logs, which are not, which are not hay bales, but they're very similar. And, um, I'm sure you read in my comments that I sent that the reason we're using them is that they stay together a little bit better and they're a little bit more absorbent than, uh, than hay bales. Um, after that, at your request, we will construct a anti-tracking pad. And that's just going to be like 12 inches of one inch gravel over 50 feet, 15 feet wide, just to knock all that mud off. like 12 inches of one-inch gravel over 50 feet, 15 feet wide, just to knock all that mud off before they, they drive through the city. Next, we'll excavate the soils from the AOC2 and 13 and 4. And hopefully it will be live loaded in the trucks and transported offsite. If it's not, it's going to go to the soil containment area right here. You guys can see my mouse, right?
Um, yes, it's a little difficult for us, but yes.
Yeah, it's kind of small. Um, after that, the excavations will be backfilled with sand because that's very similar to the native soil that is there. And the reason that we are, we do that is because it promotes the subsurface drainage of water. And so there won't be any ponding. It'll move through the subsurface like it should. So it'll be, it'll be sand until one foot from the surface and it'll be finished with gravel. And then these, in these two areas, AOC13 and AOC2, it'll be finished with gravel because these are a high-traffic area. Up here towards the front, on top of the gravel, it's going to be topsoil and then it'll be seeded to reestablish the vegetation there, like it's similar that's there now. After all of that work is done, we're going to come back to this area, which is going to be cleared of all vegetation and then graded for an eventual soil cap that'll happen in the future. That's not part of the scope of work, but it will happen in the future. After that's done, we'll remove all of the temporary structures and the site will be restored to like it is now. See, this is pretty much what I, construction sequence is pretty much what I just read to you. And I know there was some concern about the truck traffic through town and I have confirmed from the trucking company that this pink line is the route that they will take. So they will come in to Berlin and go straight down Berlin Street to the site and back. And that is basically it. Can I take your questions?
Now you add two things to the presentation.
Yes.
The Inland Wetlands and Water Course Commission do approve the application on Tuesday night. So that's an update. And the town engineer had comments that were disseminated to the applicant. They responded and today he updated his comments to say he has no exception to the proposal. And those are both the wetlands decision and the email from Mike Heron, town engineer. They are in your supplemental packets.
Any question? What would the hours of trucking be?
I'm sorry, repeat that, please.
What would the hours of trucking be?
So that's a really good question. So we'll probably have between six and eight trucks from, from, you know, eight to five. And maybe over a period of 10 days. It's pretty typical.
Any other questions? Joan?
Um, yes, please. And what was the route again? You said they were coming, the, the route for the trucks?
They'll, they'll come, they'll come in on, oh my gosh, um, I can't read it. Highway, is it highway four, nine?
The drawing she just presented shows them coming up from Route 9, Mill Street to Burlington Street and straight up on Burlington Street to the facility.
Okay, and then they're, they're exiting which way?
Same route.
They're going to go all the way back. Okay. So basically Burlington Street. Alright, so that's going to be 70, that's going to be 72 then, right? 72 basically, nine to 72. And then up to Burlington.
Off of Route 9 onto Mill Street or 372 and then a left at the light onto Burlington Street at the little little store that's there in the triangle, left onto Burlington Street and then straight down Burlington Street.
And, and I believe, I, I mean, I know that she stated that the hours of trucking would be eight to five over a course of 10 days. Are we talking about 10 business days, not, not counting Saturday and Sunday, correct?
That is correct.
And also how many truck trips per day?
Six, eight trucks, that's probably three round trips.
Okay, alright, thank you. I think that's just, and does staff have any comments on this?
Basically, the, I think she adjusts all of the staff comments that were outstanding.
Alright, then no further questions from me, Madam Chair.
Mr. Viallo, any questions?
No, no questions at this time, thank you.
We are in public hearing. If there's any members from the public that wish to speak either in favor of or opposition to this application, please indicate that you're wish to speak.
Hi, my name is Diana Bassan, 167 Redwood Lane, East Burlington.
Hi, Diana, thank you.
Hi. I just wanted to thank Stancon for doing this work to help the environment over there. Happy to hear that. So my, I had questions that are pretty similar to what the, what was just asked about, you know, Monday through Friday job, how long it's going to take, the hours. I live a couple of streets over on Redwood, so we can, you know, we would hear those trucks and everything going. So my other question was, once this is approved, when was a job going to start?
We're anticipating probably mid-April, maybe the mid to late April. We're still waiting on another permit from the state and as soon as that permit gets approved, we can go ahead and, go ahead and schedule.
Okay. And so it's just pretty much restoring to how it is as is, right?
Correct.
Okay. And no, no tree removal?
So there will be tree removal, so that whole portion to the north of the site along, not along the river, but on the other side of the property boundary, they are going to remove the trees. So that they can grade it for future soil capping. And it's actually between Stancon's property and the Madabastak Water District owns the property. It's right on the property line between those two.
The north side. So that's like the backside of their, their building, right?
Right, north, like the way north side of Stancon's property.
Okay, so then if that was the north side, I would be like towards the west, my property's to the west.
Yeah, I know. So it's Stancon and then there's Madabastak Water District is to the west of that. And then there's a whole industrial district or area to the west of that and then the residential area.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, are those trees, I'm not familiar with that part of the property, like mature tall trees or are you talking about like bugs or bushes or like shorter things?
No, it's pretty junky. It's pretty, it's shrubs and junky trees. Yeah. And the reason that they have to be removed is because they need to grade that whole entire area.
Okay.
Did you have other questions, Diana?
Um, I think that's it. You know, my concern is always, you know, the buffer, you know, and, and the view. So just wanted to see if that, you know, if that tree removal is going to affect my, you know, view.
Yeah.
Facing, you know, from my backyard facing, because like I said, if you got my backyard faced that way, that, you know, you can see the building. So. I just, yeah, I didn't know if those trees would be like in my, like on my side or is it on the opposite side, which sounds like it might be towards the back end of their property, which doesn't face my house. Thank you. That's it for me.
Is there anybody else that would like to address the commission or are in opposition to this proposal?
I just wanted, this morning speaking, I just wanted to note that you did also receive in your package, I believe it was in the supplemental, I'm not sure, yes, dated today, a letter from Chris Edge. The, I know it's our director, would you like to read it? Just like we did. Dear Ms. Bailey, I wanted to add my insight and feedback on the excavation and build permit applications for Stancon LLC. The work that Stancon will be doing will help to clean some environmental contamination, which will make the property cleaner, but also give Stanchem, a firm that calls 401 Burlington Street home, the ability to continue their expansion in Burlington. Stanchem is manufacturer of paints and a great Burlington business whom I have been connected to since I became my physician seven years ago. Stanchem has been in Burlington for over 50 years and went under new ownership in the past five or so years. This new ownership has been very forward-thinking and acting. They continue to grow and will be providing amazing employment opportunities to our residents and are truly committed to Burlington. I am in full support of this application and ask for your support of Stancon and Stanchem as this project will help to move ahead their growth here in town. Sincerely, Christopher Edge and my hotel director.
Okay, one last chance, I guess. Anybody wanting to speak either in favor of or opposition to this application, please. I'm hearing none. Is there a motion to make a motion?
No problem. Question? The OC, AC of O4 excavation site. You're pulling the monitoring well, one monitoring well out of that area. There is two in that area. Does the other one will be pulled out of there?
Let me look at the map. Yeah, I mean, the monitor, yeah, the monitoring wells will be removed as they need to be. And they'll probably be replaced.
Well, my question is that the fire service at the pumping station that's there, right next to the excavation thing, has an area to the river to draft from the river.
Right.
And I don't want, I don't want that to be disturbed, or if it is disturbed, to be approved for the fire department to draft out of there. And the fishway, which is a little bit, I guess, south of the that site there, I want to make sure that that's not any runoffs or dirt or anything that's not affect that fishway.
Correct. That will not be disturbed and I actually have approval from the State Fisheries Board Commission for this work.
If, if the site is not graded correctly at that area, the fire department will not be able to draft out of the river, just in case fire there. So I would ask you to contact the chief of the Eastbrook Fire Department.
Sure.
Maybe make arrangements from them. Could be a stamp I put in there, a dry hydrant basically, makes it a lot easier to draft from, dry hydrant, to put in there to come from that river. That is a big building there. Unflammable stuff. And is this new owner addressing any of the offsmells of the chemicals in that building?
That's not, that's not part of my scope of work. We would have to address Stanchem directly. So I work for Stancon and actually Stanchem leases from Stancon. So I really don't, I really can't speak to that.
I'm glad, I'm glad to see clean up the site. The site is definitely a filthy site right now. I just want to make sure that the fire department is in your.
Right, I'll, I'll contact them and make sure, for sure.
Just to partially address that, although I really want to speak for, you know, the generalities, but the scan, the new ownership of the manufacturing facility has been in contact with the town about doing some work in their preliminary stages preparing some documents, applications and information for the town. They reached out, they're planning to do some site work. And so I think some of that is in order to become more and more compliant over time with all aspects of their operation and to make them more environmentally friendly.
Would be problems on the site being asked, says the chief of Eastbrook Fire Department and to be off board here. And the unflammability of that building. That building goes up by East Burlington.
I understand. Yes. I will make sure that I contact the fire department. We will, we will make sure that works out.
Thank you. So one quick question. After the grading is done in the area where the tree removals be done, would you opposed to, you know, maybe replanting a few trees to just help keep that buffer healthy?
So sure, we can do that in the area, yeah, the area that you were just talking about at AOC4. Yeah, I don't see a problem with that at all. The other two areas, not so much, just because they're in a high-traffic area.
I have one more question. Sorry. There is an easement or property of the railroad company went through there one time. Connecticut Railway and Lightning.
Yep.
The easement in that area there is not going to be touched at all or?
So we actually have a, we are actually in negotiations right now, getting an access agreement. The Madabastak Water District actually owns that right of way. So we're in negotiations with them to work along that property boundary a little bit on their property. So yeah, it might be, it might be touched a little bit.
I'm, I'm asking about that because this, it's been an idea, plan in a lot of people's heads right now, that that railway access there become a trail for
Yeah.
It goes and stuff like that, all the way through back up to, effectively built in that area, through the quarry. I just want to make sure that's available to the town if the railroad decides to say yes.
Yeah, definitely. We're not going to be encroaching on that piece of property. There's no reason that can't happen. Yeah.
Hi, it's Diana Bassan again, 167 Redwood Lane. Can, is there any way you could just bring up that map one more time and show the property again? And those, the different areas and sites and like, you know, you were just talking about that other area. I just kind of like to see it, to understand it fully.
Yeah, one second. See. Alright, let's see. So, okay, so here's Burlington Street is, you know, to the south of this, very south. The air, can you, can you guys see my mouse at all?
Yes.
Moving. Okay, so this area along the property boundary with Madabastak Water District is the area that's going to be cleared. This green area is going to be graded and cleared of vegetation. Now, not the trees along the river. Those are, those are going to stay. But the trees along this property line are going to go.
And that's the area that you're willing to install plantings once the work is done?
I'm not sure about that because I'm not sure that it's going to be allowed because this area is actually part of remediation. So it has to be a specific cap according to the state. So it has to be like four feet of soil. So I'm not sure that we can put vegetation on top of it that big. It will be revegetated, but I'm not sure there will be trees. It might just have to be grass.
Joan Bailey, do you have questions?
Um, yeah, hang on, hang on. But aren't, isn't that buffered up against residential zone?
So no, the, the area to the west of that is So no, the, the area to the west of that is all industrial. It kind of goes up a hill and it's industrial. Let me see if I can.
All right, so, so let me ask the, the bold and daring question, why are you excavating? What was the purpose of this?
So there is contaminated soil that exceeds the Connecticut standard, so to comply with the Connecticut standard and to eliminate any type of infiltration into the river that we're excavating that contaminated soil, as required by the state, basically.
Uh, but we're, we're taking, we're taking a hill down, correct?
No. No, there's no, no, there's no hill. Which part, which area are you talking about specifically?
The whole part that you're excavating.
No, there's three separate small excavations, and then there's one larger area that's just grading, that is going to require a cap because there's contamination underneath it, that needs to be, have a cap on top of it.
But the excavation part, is that, because you're taking out a couple truckloads here, and you're going to be doing it over ten days?
Yeah, it's a few, it's a few truckloads, yeah, it is, but it's flat, no, there's no, there's no hill, it's just coming straight out of the ground and then it's getting finished right back to how it was before.
All right, so you're going to excavate all these truckloads out, and then you're going to regrade the lot?
Correct.
Same elevation it was before?
Yep. Same as before.
And where's that coming from?
So that will come from, we, well, I've ordered like rock and sand to come in, that's certified clean material.
Yeah. All right, so now you're bringing material onto the site?
Correct.
So not only are we excavating, but we're filling as well?
Right, so we're taking the bad soil out and we're replacing it with clean sand and gravel.
Okay, so is this permit for just ten days of taking stuff out? Or are we talking about ten days of taking stuff out and ten days of bringing stuff in?
No, 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 that's ten days total.
All right, so ten days total is going to take out and bring in?
Right.
Okay. All right, I just needed all of that for clarification, Madam Chair. So I think that that is the extent of my questions, thank you.
Thank you. Missioners, any other questions?
Yeah, I have another question. Um, how about, like, when they take the stuff out, they dig it up, anything that goes airborne, how they can contain any airborne contaminants? So.
That was Miss Bissin, the neighbor, that was speaking.
I'm sorry, Diana, sorry, yeah, Diana Passan, 167 Redwood Lane, East Berlin. My question was about air, like, when they dig up the, the soil, and how are they going to contain airborne contaminants from flying around in the air?
So there won't be any, there will be a slight volatilization, but it's not going to be, I mean, the chemistry doesn't fit, so there, there, there won't be any type of airborne contaminants that are going to be a problem.
Okay, great, thank you.
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
Thank you, we have a motion to close the public hearing, is there a second?
I have a second.
Second by Commissioner Rogan. Those in favor of closing the public hearing?
Hi.
Opposed? So the public hearing is closed, thank you, we'll move on then to the next item on the agenda.
Can I please remind her to please stop sharing?
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Thanks.
Oh, that's much better.
Sorry about that. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Excuse me, item B, public hearing special permit applications of Dr. Martin Jomfi for Business Offices of Pro Natural Home Care at 1263 Berlin Turnpike Unit A in the SPDD Zone per Berlin zoning regulations per section 6C. There's somebody here to speak on behalf, the applicant.
It's Susan, I don't know the names, I have been hearing mostly with them. If you're on Zoom and speaking to this application and explaining it, can you please unmute yourself? After that, I heard that at our counter today, talking to Fran about the meeting.
Do you want to move it later into the meeting?
Either that or we can continue. Is there anybody in the Zoom meeting intending to speak on this application?
I, I would suggest you give them another opportunity after perhaps the next item, just to, just in case they talk that time, and I'm going to try to text Fran to see what the response she got in speaking with her husband.
No, do we need a motion? I don't think we need a motion for that. We don't need a motion to the staff, right?
Yeah, I think you can just hold off and go out of voice.
Okay, and go out of voice. And moving on, next item on the agenda, zone change request of 550 to 554 Berlin Turnpike Associates LLC to change the zone of map ten dash two, block eighty-three, lot thirteen, five twenty-two, Berlin Turnpike and map ten dash two, block eighty-five, five fifty-four, Berlin Turnpike from Berlin Turnpike one, BT one to Berlin Turnpike Development, BTD. Did we combine these? We did mine before?
These have been combined and they're for the purposes of information at the public hearing and was previously open at the 1216 meeting and continued, and again, in her testimony, February third, and was continuing today. So those are the three meeting dates. I will note that there is a typographical error on the agenda that said public hearing for item B wouldn't open, that should have been moved to IFC, which is this IFC, you know, bold print for item B, as the fact hearing was open, that hearing has never been opened, it's brand new.
Right. Okay, so just so that we're clear, we're discussing both items C and D on the agenda, and then combine for purposes of discussion.
Good evening. Very talented someone, we have the applicant, five fifty to five fifty-four, Berlin Turnpike Associates LLC, and also attended tonight is Bart Bovey, Mark Vertucci and Jeff Jankey are both online, I believe I saw them earlier on the screen. Good evening again. Before I get started, I just want to give you some more, we submitted a supplemental traffic memorandum, lawyer, that was yesterday, and I received an email today asking me to bring two, two copies with me, so here are two paper, two paper copies of the technical memorandum. Beginning, I found in January twentieth public hearing, the applicant and the development team made some revisions to address commissioner comments. Before reviewing these changes, we're just going to do a quick refresher on the project. Bart has put up an overall site plan, located on the west side of the Berlin Turnpike, just north of Woodlong Road, there are three lots that aggregate to twenty-one acres in total. These three lots are five oh two, five twenty-two, and five fifty-four of Berlin Turnpike, while currently zoning BT one. The applicant has proposed rezoning these to the Berlin Turnpike Development Zone for purposes of mixed-use development. Five oh two would be a retail and approximately two-acre development, five twenty-two would be residential, approximately twelve and a half acre development, and five fifty-four is a commercial, existing commercial development, I think everybody knows it as ABC Develop, or ABC Construction. The property sits on a hall bounded by public utilities, it's in a hall bounded by public utilities and the river. The housing proposal is for a hundred and six units in three buildings. At the January twentieth meeting, there was discussion about amenities, landscaping, public walkways, ornamental light posts in a current and a community room. There was also discussion about peak entrance, exit area, possible bus stop, acceleration, deceleration lanes, all of these items have been addressed and will be discussed and reviewed tonight. Before handing over to Bart to discuss many of these site revisions, I just want to briefly reference the materials submitted since the January twentieth public hearing. These were revised plans, architectural renderings, and material cut sheets, as well as supplemental traffic memo as I discussed earlier. I'll turn it over to Bart now, and we'll discuss all of these items as, as we progress through our revisions.
Have the right map up?
That's good.
Right?
That's good.
Same thing?
Thank you, Tim. So I spent plenty of time taking some of your comments to heart regarding aesthetics and buffering, trying to dress up this plan and this proposal a little bit. So I'd just like to go over briefly from the start of the project into building three, exactly what we're proposing. First thing what we did is we reconfigured the entryway, so instead of just directly entering and exiting off the turnpike, we've let a little bit of a deceleration, I said, acceleration lane, basically goes back up to where the lane is, so basically doubles the length of the acceleration lane, and also the bus pull-off area, which is separate from the, from the deceleration lane, and then changed that entrance to the retail area, kind of a multidirectional, in and out, just an inbound. So basically, all traffic leaving the retail establishment will walk the driveway, you know, all focused through the outbound line, there will be no exit conflict coming through here, so cars will make little move. You know, we're talking maybe eight, ten buses a day, so that's all you're going to get the buses on that, so I think it's a much safer pattern, obviously Mark will discuss a little bit more, and this is all subject to DOT review, but I think it's a step forward for what we're proposing. So besides the busway and the driveway entering in, we provided a buffer area of evergreens right here in this location, to help screen that building and some of the, the parking areas during the wider part of the, the median area there. It's not going to interfere with the view of the building from the road, but they'll just do a little bit of screening and have a little bit of diversity through exit. We've also added street trees, especially along the northern, the southern side of the road, to kind of dress that up and not leave it so barren, but kind of improve the aesthetic, and also we've extended the sidewalks to the, to the bus stop there, but also into the retail and into the, into the existing commercial, so people can take the bus, they can frequent these two buildings, they can come to the back residence, come through to the retail area and vice versa, so they can move through the site. We also besides the, the buffering, we, we did have some landscaping, it does go and pick up on this, but on the site plan it does, to help screen that existing fence as you drive it through, so you're not going to be driving where I want a channel fence, but you'll have landscape buffering up there. The continual, we've added benches periodically through the sidewalk area here, especially up through this area, we've also added benches up along sidewalk as it approaches the buildings, and also across building three, each of the three buildings also has a bike rack added, that wasn't there before. We have added a picnic grill at the station area, there are basically six of them between buildings one and two, and three of them adjacent to building three, that's a place that you can get out, they can cook out, they can eat, they can come back in and they can eat outside. We've had a twelve-hundred square foot community building, it's not labeled on this plan, but it's like one of the other plans, we purposely separated this away from the other buildings because we didn't want any potential non-residents to be coming into the building, so we've left the separate building aside to that building to north, twelve hundred square feet. Jeff can talk a little bit about it as he gives you a little bit of our architectural, and speaking of amenities, we do have Jeff Chankey, our architect, remember originally we just kind of gave him a plain, black, white picture, just got some colored red ones, so he can talk about materials and colors. I did add, and if you look on the plans, they're labeled, but they're not shown, but there's exercise stations along this entire pathway, is a, in fact, labeled, and I will have it on the final plan, and if you look up the C one, C two, you'll see them labeled, but for some reason they didn't pick up. We've added an evergreen raised berm along this side between the parking lot and the building, so that's going to help block the view from the building as you're driving through. We do still have some street trees, but this raised berm will act as screen that, that building passes by going into this location. We have also added lights, street lighting through here, through symbols, there's a copy of the light detail on one of the detail sheets that shows it's kind of a colonial-type lighting fixture, but the, the lights will start at the entry, we haven't shown any lights up on the DOT right of there, but once we cross into ours, we've shown lighting through here, through this area, and also around the screen. We haven't been able to put any vertical structures, lighting trees, or benches within the right of way, we kept those out because the ceiling piece is going to require, so the lighting is shown from this location to this location. There was a question about how far we were away from these poles, I can tell you we're about a hundred and seventy-five feet away from that old structure located to the west of the site, but for the power lines that do, we're about seventy-five feet to the closest place in the building. I think that's basically all the improvements, so Jeff will talk a lot about the building and the aesthetic of the building, which I don't think we really properly demonstrated. We did get engineering comments, maybe about six hours ago, five hours ago. Am I, sorry, that's the other question. No, we have, we do owe the, the town consultant range comments, I did have a COVID issue beginning November sweep, but it's all been resolved, so, so my time schedule's put back, but I'll get that till first part of next week, and if I have to meet with a lot of meetings, and discuss those as well. But basically, we think we've gone a long way to kind of dress up the building, dress up the aesthetic of the driveway. You'll, you'll see the, I think the appearance and looking down across the site is much better, and I think traffic circulation and pedestrian circulation all work a lot better on this, so that's what we've come up with. Thanks, Mark. This time I'd like to ask the traffic consultant, Mark Vertucci, to comment on his technical memorandum, which amends his previous traffic report. We, we addressed some specific issues raised by the commission, one is the project being approved just north of this project, and the new traffic light, as well as the, the bus stop and the acceleration, deceleration. I think as Bart mentioned, I think it's important to note that while we propose these acceleration, deceleration lanes, and, and the bus stop, this is all subject to DOT approval, because it is a state rule. We will take the approval, hopefully we get approval, if we get approval, we'll take this to DOT, and what any revisions that are necessary by DOT, if necessary, we'll be back in front of the commission to address any modifications, but we're hoping that this, this proposal tonight will be a final proposal that DOT will accept. With that, I'll turn it over to Mark Vertucci for a few comments on his traffic report.
Great, thanks, Tim. Again, Mark Vertucci, senior transportation engineer at Fosse &amp; O'Neil, also a registered professional engineer and professional traffic operations engineer as well. As I mentioned, we, we had prepared Tim mentioned, we we had prepared a supplemental traffic memorandum, which primarily was to amend our analysis to include development that was recently approved and was just submitted to to DOT, to OSTA, for major traffic generator certificate application, which is just north of the site. It's the four oh four Berlin Turnpike Project, I believe it's it's being called Beach Hill. Mixed use development, which has two hundred apartment units and a hundred and sixty thousand square feet of development with a hotel and some retail and a convenience store as well. So we obtained their their traffic analysis. We included their their projected volumes in our analysis and added that to our background analysis condition. And then we just reran reran the numbers, we reran the background and the combined or build analysis that includes our development. And there was not a significant impact to the intersections that we included in our study area, which were the Berlin Turnpike at Demming Road, the Berlin Turnpike at Woodlawn Road and Worthington Ridge. So there's still no significant increase in delay at those intersections when we add in our traffic compared to the background condition. We also looked at the new intersection that will be formed at the at that project, the four oh four Berlin Turnpike Project. There's going to be a traffic signal just to the north of where our development is at the entrance to the to four oh four. So that'll have a new median cut, it will have a traffic signal and it will have a northbound left turn lane. That intersection operates efficiently at level service B, and we don't change the operation there when we add our traffic in. But one thing that that new development driveway and median cut will do for us is it creates a U-turn capability just to the north of our site, which is is actually quite a benefit to the traffic that's approaching our site from the south on the turnpike, wants to, you know, turn left into our driveway. Obviously, they can't do it because we don't have a median cuts, but they have, now they have an option immediately north of our development where they can make a U-turn at this new signal, which is up, should be operating efficiently when it's up and running. This takes those left U-turns out away from the Demming Road intersection further to the north, which is an intersection that has quite a bit of peak hour delay. So that helps alleviate some of the left turning U-turn traffic up there at Demming Road. The other thing this new signal will do is every time it changes phase, it's going to create a gap in traffic on the Berlin Turnpike southbound. So that is another thing that is actually good for our our site. Having these frequent gaps in between platoons of cars will allow vehicles to make an easier right hand turn out of the property. So those were the primary things we looked at in this memorandum. We did mention the addition of the acceleration, deceleration areas that Bart and Tim had both described. I think this, you know, having a bit of a deceleration area approaching the right in is a safety benefit in that we can get the the cars as they're slowing down to turn right. They have an area, you know, kind of in the shoulder there where they can pull over and decelerate a bit, which reduces rear end collision risk. As Tim said, we have to run this past DOT, we have two levels of DOT review. Should we get approval here at planning and zoning, we would first have to go to OSTA for a major traffic generator certificate application. The DOT would be doing a thorough review there, the traffic engineering unit in Newington. And then the district level, District One, would then review it for encroachment permit application. So multiple levels of review there. Now, obviously, it's the road under state jurisdiction, so they would have the, you know, the final opinion on the addition of this acceleration, deceleration lane and the layout of it as well. You know, it's possible they they'd accept something more to like a widened shoulder as as opposed to a full blown lane here. Because this isn't really an interstate, it's it's an arterial. But I think the main point is we're, you know, we're proposing an area, a widened area so that that a car can get out of that right turn lane and slow down to make the turn in. It also helps with the addition, the proposed addition of this bus turnout, to have this this widened area so the bus isn't, you know, pulling slowly into and out of the right travel lane of the turnpike. So we think this is an improvement. But as I said, you know, we have to, we have to go through the process with DOT. And, you know, they'll they'll have an ultimate opinion on this and will work with us on the final layout. With that, I I I don't have anything further. I can take questions or we can turn it over to Jeff and then take the questions at the end.
Thanks, Mark.
Thank you.
Actually, before we jump to Jeff, Bart's informed me that he would like to just touch a couple of points in the site plan revisions. Yeah, I apologize, I forgot.
Okay.
That I want to make. Number one, this plan reflects our vision of parking. Originally, we're two spaces per unit. It was suggested from our conversations, Marie and also our third party reviewer, that we can potentially drop that down to as low as a hundred and I think seventy three. We have shown a hundred and seventy nine spaces. We primarily lost spaces under the power lines. So we want for those units to be closer. This is actually six spaces. I I know we're talking about potentially allowing people to park and use some of the recreational trails to enter the downside of those six spaces would be adequate for potential public parking, even though I don't think we would label it as such for people who are in the parking net. We would add that if we wouldn't do that. The other point I wanted to make was there was a strip in this location, and I think Don, as part of third part interview noted that we didn't have enough square footage for our parcel for a hundred and six units. We have subsequently taken this area and expanded it down along the driveway. Previously, this driveway was going to be part of the amusement, which gets through the twenty foot deep within the area. We're expanding that, so now that area is all within the driveway, so that all fit to the the residential portion. We take all that area together to come up with a hundred and sixty. So we doubted that on a plan, and we noted that in the calculation. So it's easily incredible. Let me just try to make Tim.
Sure. Our architect is here, he's done a lot of work on buildings and he is available with these makes of color renderings. And we'll have Jeff come up now and talk about the the architectural and also what he's come up with for the community building.
We get help.
You're good at. Hi, hopefully you can all hear me well. This is Jeff Yonkey from Yonkey Architecture in Hartford. I've been working with the team on getting some more information pulled together for the buildings. The first thing that you're looking at here right now on the screen is a proposed community building. It's a it's a it's a small footprint building. Trying to keep it fairly low profile, we're trying to take some design cues from the other three main apartment buildings. As far as materials go, we've got a couple of sections in the apartment buildings that have storefront and or curtain wall, which we haven't, those, some of those things wouldn't wouldn't really be completely finalized till we get further into the construction documents. But the the proposal or some sections of glass, we think that that gives the 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 building, especially with the the light from the north side elevation, which is on the approach that you come in as you're driving down the driveway towards the parking lot or walking down in that direction. You have a nice view to see inside of the building. And then again, just, you know, plan wise, as far as function, typical community spaces for this type of development is for small community gatherings, a place, you know, storage area for tables and chairs, that sort of thing, a small kitchenette. And we're presuming that, you know, we're going to be required to have a men's and women's ADA compliant bathrooms. And I I think the occupant load would put us at the limit where we would need to have two exits. So we have a main exit, a main, excuse me, main entrance on the west elevation side and then a emergency exit on the backside as well. Again, it's a it's fairly simple and we're trying to keep the the building small in scale and not make it anything more than what it really needs to be. Materials as far as siding, roofing materials, and the other exterior finishes would be presumably the same as what we're using on the other three main buildings, buildings one, two, and three. If you want to go to the next couple of images, I think in the package, if they're in order. So one of the other things that we did was we incorporated in building number one, which is the first, it's a four story building. We have a small, we we took one of the apartments and have converted that into basically a model slash rental office, virtually the same as the other buildings, but we felt that that was an an important thing to have for bringing perspective tenants in into the properties. And then if you go down to the next couple, you can get some senses. I can talk you through materials. So this is really meant to be kind of a, I think, sort of a menu of what the what the proposed materials could be. We have a, we're we're proposing right now a, and I, there was a a packet that I think you should have that has the, some of the material specifications. And so we were provoke proposing vinyl clad clabbered siding on the, I'm going to call them the the ends of the building, the two sides, and then the center is a vinyl shake material. The base is a brick material. And then we have a water table, which presumably would be a probably a a parched concrete material of the base of it. The rest of the trim package would be wood and PVC trim and architectural asphalt shingles. There is, if if you can zoom in on these, you can see over the the main entrances of each building on the, these are the fronts, by the way. We're we're trying to keep these, what we think is in the vern, ties in with the vernacular, but give them a little bit more of a contemporary appeal. So there's where there's, you know, the signage there is just basically a freestanding open letter type of sign that would locate that building as building one. And that is an awning that comes out from underneath the building. Very simply cantilevering out and providing some downlights to light the space and then also provide some weather protection for the entrance into the buildings. The brick choices, we we just are representing graphically some options. One of the comments when I initially spoke with with Bart and Tim, which I think were feat, came from feedback from 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 the commission, was to, you know, try to break up some of the colors. So we're, if if you scroll through the next couple of images, you'll see that we're trying to address some of that, so that each each building would be would be, I I think, unique in in color. And materials would be the same, but the brick does not necessarily all have to be a, you know, red clay brick. We could use a a dark gray brick, we could use a beige brick, we could use traditional, you know, kind of Connecticut red clay brick. And then again, we have color options with the siding packages. And that's basically the the long and short of of what we have. I I do understand that the buildings that the designs have been looked at, and I think that staff has suggested that we've we've we're meeting the requirements as far as height limitations and as far as.
What was you doing upstairs? Come here.
As far as.
Someone's not muted.
Thank you. So I I think, again, my understanding is that staff has has reviewed the 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 plans and the elevations that were originally submitted and verified that we are, in fact, you know, within the guidelines for the height restrictions and, you know, minimum sizes for units and that sort of thing. And that's that's basically the the long and short of it. I'm certainly happy and available to answer any any questions that you might have.
Thanks, Jeff. And in addition to the architectural renderings, Jeff also submitted the material cut sheets. We have a review dose, but it would just show the different types of siding and materials that was in the project. We we hope that the commission considered the applicant heard the commission at the last meeting and enhanced the proposal significantly. I think I think the key word that we took from from the last hearing was that the commission didn't want to see an eyesore. I think you're going to see far from that. The architectures and site plan have been enhanced. And this is far from an eyesore and complements the housing corridor or complimented or contemplated by this commission. On a challenging site, due to the public utilities and a river boundary, this is an attractive place to both live and work. We would entertain any any comments. I know Don Holland at the last hearing reserved, he's one of the consultants retained by the commission. He deserved some comments, I think until this meeting. I don't know if he was on earlier, I believe he's still on. So we're prepared to hear comments now.
I mean, I would just like to comment the fact that some of our concerns at the last meeting had to do with the failure of it, amenities for some of the residents. And I personally, as, you know, member of the commission, do appreciate the fact that that was taken into account as well as trying to adjust some of the traffic issues we had. So that's that's appreciated. I think, you know, the adding of the community center, I think, will, you know, even pull some of the residents together as well, I think. You know, taking up our comments into into play has really enhanced the plan.
Any questions at this point from the commission?
Do we have a lighting?
Yes. I believe we did, we did provide the light locations and we did provide the poles. The poles are basically the same poles that Don was using in the center of town, those type of light fixtures. And as you get into, maybe not that large, you can play on, but maybe it is a forested place. You can actually see the light pole locations and how they're brought in. There's there's really going to be no light being assigned all of all sites, lights going to be set down. So really have a good illumination moving plan, but basically all the lights are shown.
You got any drawing of the retail building?
No, other than what was approved originally by this commission. Well, the site was only within five years, so the site plan is still valid, but I can, we can have elevation to that.
With the reduction of parking queue planned for your pile of snow during winter.
We yeah, we had started, I had started to put that out, but I kind of ran out of time. But because we're taking the snow off the entities, it makes sense to be able to push the snow out where we don't have parking spaces. So a large of these areas are going to be within the snow, and then we're going to look for areas within the interior here to do snow storage. But basically, the majority of snow picked up or removed, don't put in those areas.
What about trash services?
For one of us. From what I understand, and I asked this question. You know, we're really limited to what we can do because otherwise we're gonna make it very difficult for trucks to pick up. But from what I understand, these containers are sized so that. The management company looks at the use of dumpsters and as the dumpsters they use, if then they pick them up fifty times a week. They'll come and take them up two or three times a week. They won't let it go once a week, once every two weeks, but they'll look at the usage. Use those dumpsters. Those are two full recycle and storage dumpster locations, but we tried to cite those. In such a way that they can get picked up easily and not that they truck turns like make turns and such.
And those buildings have balconies on, correct?
Oh, because small balcony, yes.
Okay, so will there be like a. I know in the past we've had builders who have been to put balconies on, we also next to me, I guess. Someone's underwear hanging off, um, towels and all sorts of unsightly.
I I don't know what the manager roles are, but we can ask what the manager roles would be. I would hate it.
Happens.
I'll say as the architect, they're not allowed at all. No, no, nothing is allowed to hang on the railings.
Can we get the magnetic field tested on those wires?
No, we haven't done it yet, no.
I know that that. All over the country, bad. So that that particular line system has been pretty bad. I just make sure that's not a whole problem.
Well, I'm sure that's gonna be something that the owners could be worried about if he is. But we have not done that part of this report with this. Just don't know what it's gonna end up being. And the developer may come in and find that he wants to build least two and not build the third. So. We're approving the full site, but I think the developer is the one, the builder is the one who's gonna be able to pour back the tenants.
I too am interested to hear what Dr. Follin has to say. Do any of our other commissioners have questions before we ask for Dr. Follins? Okay, Dr. Follin, you would be so kind as to join us.
Evening. Thank you, Chair. I appreciate it. One is I'm very pleased with. I'm mostly very pleased with the revisions and changes. In this new updated set of plans. You know, comments, comments of mine and comments of the commission related to amenities have definitely been addressed. As I go through kind of all the comments that I had made specifically regarding the site plan. I believe about, I I'd say ninety percent of them have been addressed. There's probably three issues that I still struggle with a little bit and wanna raise. As I I just think I have to continue to raise them. I'll start with the easiest first or the. Least issue first, but one is that I still have concern over a lack of designated loading spaces. For turnovers when units flip with a hundred and six units. If we just guesstimate eight units a month turnover, some months maybe more, some months maybe less. Especially along, maybe not so much on building three, but in front of building. You know, buildings one and two, two or three U-Haul trucks show up. Oversized, can't fit into space as well. I'm a little bit concerned about potential traffic circulation on a. Saturday morning at the end of the month when you have that turnover occur. So that would be one. The the dumpsters, actually, this would make it four, but I'm not, I don't want to harp on this much. I'm just a little bit, I I understand the applicants, you know, discussion on dumpsters, their locations. I'm glad that they may be picked up multiple times a week. That's all great. Just a little distance there from building two and that's probably less a regulatory comment and more consumer preference comment. I'm not sure how like how much I would like lugging my trash from building two to the dumpsters. But the other one and one of the commission members already raised it and it was addressed to some degree, but I still want to raise it. And that's the snow storage, the snow plowing and snow storage. I don't see an issue at all down that building three, the way that parking lot's designed. And ample spaces around it for the clearing of snow, but it's the long corridor between buildings one and two. Whether it be at either sides, you know, along the front of the building or along the landscape buffer. On the east side. There's not much space there for snow and if you're pushing the long way in each direction. You really only have some areas to the south side to deposit, so. I I'm a little concerned there with snow and then the last comments. Going back to my original comments is that provision in section eight H six D dot three. Sorry. But that's the provision on the density with. With four units per acre, but then you get eight units per acre if you have essentially ten units per floor. I recognize the buildings don't even out perfectly. It's thirty-nine units, twenty-eight. And thirty-nine, it's common areas that are, you know, stealing a unit. Per floor, I believe, so I think they generally may meet the spirit of the regulations with ten units per floor and they get their eight units. Their eight units per acre, that part of the provision I'm fine with. It's the next part of the provision. That says with ten or more units per floor, twenty percent of the units may have two bedrooms. And right now as proposed, the development is essentially fifty-fifty between two and one bedrooms. So I think there's a conflict with that provision in the regulations. That exists at this point. I personally, I'm not opposed to a fifty-fifty mix between. You know, one and two bedrooms. I think that's pretty common in today's market. I think there's ample market there for the two-bedroom units. You know, that's not the concern. It's just the way that regulation reads. I'm not sure if as proposed, it meets that regulation. Since I didn't comment in length at the last meeting, I just want to back up or move away from the details of the state plan and just say. You know, if you read my report, my narrative around the zone change itself, my narrative around the special permit itself. I think they meet the big picture intense for the zone change for the special permit. I think the commission still has discretion. You guys know what you intended with your regulations better than I will ever know. So you still have discretion through the zoning, the zone change and the special permit. For your decision making, so don't feel bound by my my opinions. But in general, I believe they they do meet those criteria. And I'm very pleased with what I saw with the architecturals tonight. But those last few things on the site plan. You know, I I I think some more thought, time and thought should be put into the plowing. It would be really nice if another set of dumpsters could be closer to building two, but that's not the break all. And I think that density issue with the unit mix needs to be discussed and addressed, so. I'll stop there. If anyone has questions of me, I'm more than willing to take them.
Thank you. Too many commissioners have questions at this point.
He just brought up, you know, one building, first building is a. Thirty-nine units, next one's twenty-eight. I'm wondering in my head. When I saw the renderings, how big that. Thirty-nine unit building is. If that. Three-eight, thirty-nine could be, but when you're coming into the property, you see the the smaller building first. And then you can gradually, you know, work up to the bigger building. Just, just. You don't get that big, the first building coming in. You know, you got two little buildings, you just put the big building in between the two. It might be a little softening now that looks.
I wasn't sure who you were addressing, Mr. Follin, Dr. Follin. Yeah, okay, yeah, we're taking all these into consideration. We will be getting back to everybody by the next.
When I see that rendering, it's a bow, but yeah, that's a big building first.
Any other commissioner comments or questions? We are in public hearing. Are there members of the public that have questions or comments in favor of or opposition to what? They've seen this at this point? Hearing none? Again, any comments either in favor of or opposed to this application? And Maureen, do you have comments for us at this point where I'm assuming we're continuing?
Yeah, we are ready for the drainage reports as, uh, turning some of them noted. And for the other consultants, Robert Demashy is online as well. But he's waiting for information or to complete his report, so that hasn't been distributed yet. In order to keep this item open, I do believe we need an extension grant exactly how.
Yes, we are interested in doing since we've been discussing this with Maureen. We we have enough time to continue this through March seventeenth meeting, so we will do that. I'll file it up for an email tomorrow or tomorrow, but we're already consenting extension of the public hearing.
And as far as staff comments go, we're largely relying on the consultants for the third-party review for these staff comments. And I find that we need to pull some of the thoughts together and summarize. We'll do that at the staff level. And most. And that usually goes along with engineering as well. They do the same if they find something that they know they're not. I know more person review, definitely would for this project. Do you have the comments, I believe, from the other departments? That the building official will will be requiring all stamped set of drawings for permitting, including the MEPs and third-party inspections. For a project of this size and the fire department will have one inspection schedule. Although that's not this one, I'm sorry, I have the wrong one. Comments from that, from the individual departments as distributing.
Okay, so I guess we'll be continuing this.
Madam Chair, can I make a motion? Should I make a motion? We continue this to March seventeenth, St. Patrick's Day.
Have some green beer?
Pardon? Yeah, well, you can drink whatever you want. It's March, it's St. Patrick's Day, whatever, March seventeenth. That's my motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to continue the seconded. All in favor? So moving on, thank you, everybody.
No problem.
Next item on the agenda, special permit site plan applications of the Preserve SM LLC. For seventy-six residential units and forty-eight buildings and twenty-eight family units on lot one fifty.
You're going?
Yes.
Getting late, right? Good evening again, attorney comes up while we have the applicant for Reserve SM LLC. Here tonight on behalf of the applicant is Joe Capack, he's sitting in the back myself and Bart Boe. As discussed at the February third public hearing, the proposed cluster housing development off West Lanes, Jason, Suragui Mountain. Property is located in the PR two zone and section five C four J commits the higher density development. Subject to special permit review. So Little Country Club currently owns the property, it's two hundred and twenty, owns the entire, the entire lot of two hundred and twenty-nine acres. Which is known as fifty-one, Grand Decker's Lane. The project is a hundred and ten acres of that two hundred and twenty-nine acres. And of the hundred and ten acres, nineteen will be gated to the Burrowland Land Trust, fifty-six will be conserved in adhesion. And twenty will actually be the footprint of the development. There are seventy-six units proposed, forty-eight in your two or four unit buildings and twenty-eight single-family development. At the last meeting, Bart reviewed the site plan, Scott Heskett reviewed the traffic and Chris Hill reviewed the architecturals. A couple, there were two commissioners and two neighbors that complained about some possible hiker parking. Street parking by the by the hikers. There was, we talked about a eight-twenty-four referral. By the town council, the water and sewer develop issues, the conservation easement in the Burrowland Land Trust. We also talked about the NDDV report. Construction phasing. And at that time, the engineering and the planner comments were were pending. Since that last meeting, Bart has submitted a, Bart Boe has completed a construction schedule. With some inspection reports and earlier today, I submitted some water and sewer miscellaneous documents. That I'll touch upon in a second, the conserva, the proposed conservation easement. And we had discussions with the Burrowland Land Trust and the Burrowland Land Trust submitted a letter in support of the application. As well as accepting the land that we're proposing to feed to the Burrowland Land Trust. At this time, and also I think at the last meeting, Commissioner Dorsey asked. Whether the final report by George Logan on the national diversity database had been submitted. It has been submitted, has been filed. I have a copy of it that I'd like to submit right now. Showing our response on the wildlife and plant species concerns. I direct your attention, I believe it's on the, it was the water and sewer. Water and sewer supplemental tag. I just want to walk everybody through, because there's been some concern about public water and public sewer. Both are conditions of a cluster of a high-density development in the PR two zone, that public water and public sewer be available. Both are available. There were some administrative issues that had to be overcome. The first is that the public sewer, there was no, this was not part of the DEP sewer map. So we had to go to DEP and request them to expand the sewer service map, which they have. We did that in conjunction with the Kensington Fire District. This was not anybody's district. This was uncharted sewer dis. Uncharted sewer land and now the Kensington Fire District has been approved by the DEP for this. And that's the first page of that water and sewer submission that's up. And that's the first page of that water and sewer submission that's up on the, on that, um, chart right now. The second is that, uh, as far as water is concerned, moving from sewer to water, there is public water available. Um, in fact, public water and public sewer are very close. Kensington Fire District has supplied both. And there was, uh, a dispute, a territorial dispute between the, between the Kensington Fire District and the Water Control Commission as to who is going to supply the water. Uh, the Water Control Commission has agreed that Kensington Fire District has the infrastructure to do this. And you'll see a couple of pages. It was a letter from the town attorney, um, and the, uh, town manager, which stated that, uh, the water control, um, is permitting the Kensington Fire District to provide public water within their exclusive sewer, exclusive water area until such time as the, uh, Water Control Commission has infrastructure, um, to be able to provide service. And then, there's also a letter from Richard Penter, who's counsel to the Kensington Fire District. And he is, and he, in his letter, he states that the Kensington Fire District will be providing water and sewer to the project. And he submits two, um, permit, two developer permit agreements, one for water and one for sewer that will be negotiated. And finally, there's an agreement between the Kensington Fire District and the Burland Water Control Commission as to the sharing, as to, um, the, uh, Water Control Commission allowing the Kensington Fire District to, uh, to provide the, the public water. Um, this agreement is identical to a very similar situation, identical situation actually, that happened between the Worthington Fire District and the Water Control, where the Worthington Fire District is providing water on ledge, let's drive, um, to a, um, to a order, uh, that the Water Control could not service. All but driven by who has easier, uh, who, who has infrastructure that can access the property without providing duplicate services. Because DEP will not, will not provide, the Department of Public Health is not allowed to provide repetitive, uh, infrastructure. Um, also attached to that, um, to a, uh, the, the submission today is a proposed conservation easement. Uh, we have to have a discussion about that. Um, the developer has proposed, you know, uh, you really don't have a proposal on this. We have, we have a proposal for the conservation easement. Whether it's going to be administered by the town of Burland through its Planning and Zoning Commission and Inland Wetlands Agency, or, uh, possibly by the Burland Land Trust. In attorney current's letter, uh, the Burland Land Trust, uh, will not only accept the land that we will deed to them, but also stated that they would be the, um, that they would, uh, carry out the terms of the conservation easement if the commission thought, uh, thought that that was appropriate. But whether if the commission wants to do it themselves, that's fine as well. Um, we'll, we'll do it either way. Just touching briefly on the, on the land transfers. Um, the way this is going to work, and we really can't see it entirely on the map this year. We, we can't, this would be lot ninety-three right here, around forty-two. Bart showing it. Lot ninety-three would be here. The, the acreage that we will be beating to lot ninety-three is this area to the north of the construction footprint. So none of this is going to require subdivision pool. And the reason being is because this entire two hundred and twenty-nine acre parcel that's owned by Soil and Country Club, it gets one free cut, as it's called. And they've owned the property for a century, they've never had any cuts. And so this hundred and ten acres will be their free cut, not requiring subdivision pool. Once we own this property, we will then do a boundary line revision for lot ninety-three, adding this property to lot ninety, to lot ninety-three. And there's also not a subdivision under the statute because it's done not to, not for purposes of creating a building lot, but for purposes of one conservation. It's right in the statute that if you eat land, revise a lot in favor of another lot for purposes of conservation, that is not a subdivision under the statute. And finally, our third transfer, the third transfer would be the parking area. And very similar to this transfer card, right in the same statute, the exception that because that's going to the town, that would not be a subdivision of land either. So none of this would require any subdivision of land to accomplish this, this development. So I just wanted to walk you through that, because that was in some of the comments as well, and just so we have an understanding. And then finally getting to the eight twenty-four, and it's Kennedy General Statute's eight dash twenty-four, and you had one on your, on your, uh, agenda earlier today. That before the town can accept that piece of property, if the town, which is under the purview of the town council, um, the town council has to refer to this commission for a report. And based on that report, they get the report back, and then, and then the town council can decide whether they want to accept that piece of property. So that's been started. Um, I wrote the letter, uh, to the town manager. The town manager has referred it to the town planner for a report. It's scheduled to be on the agenda on the March fifteenth meeting. Uh, we're hoping that action is taken at the March fifteenth meeting, so at the March seventeenth meeting, it'll be on the agenda for this commission, um, to have a conversation about that and render a report back to the town council as to whether this commission believes that should be accepted by the town council. So I just wanted to go walk through some of the, uh, legal issues that were in the, in the, uh, in the comments. Um, and at this time, uh, we're still waiting, uh, well, we got the town engineer comments earlier today. Bart's starting to go through those. Uh, we don't have any time constraints, um, on, on closing this public hearing. Um, we got some more town planner comments today. Uh, we were looking at just creating other comments, and so that we would come back at the next meeting on March seventeenth with any revisions that are necessary.
Mission, any questions, comments?
Uh, sure. Were you able to do anything with making that parking level bigger to ease the, the traffic flow on?
Well, um, we are, we are, we're trying to address the situation, uh, that was not our making, that pre-existed us. And, uh, you know, it's, it's a type of, it's a type of issue, the larger you build it, the older. Um, and, uh, at this point, this is, this is what we are proposing. Um, it's a forty-seven car. It has a potential capacity of forty-seven vehicles that right now, but for this project, would be parking on the street. Um, that's not going to change. Uh, this, this project isn't going to generate any more hikers. So what we're doing is we are alleviating, or at least mitigating, um, an issue that is not our creation. This project is not creating that issue, contrary to some of what the neighbors were trying to say. So we think we're doing the right thing here in, in, in addressing this issue. Um, at, at some point where there's enough property to, to expand, and I'm not so sure that you really want to expand. I don't know what the actual use of, of Ragged Mountain is on, on any one day. I'm sure there's, you know, times where it's elevated, use is elevated. Obviously during COVID, it was elevated. Uh, what is the normal use of it? I don't think anybody knows. Um, but what we're trying to do is, i- i- is address a situation that we did not create.
Questions, comments? We're fading fast here.
Can I make a quick clarification?
Yes.
So my calculations for our timing timelines, um, is that public hearing was opened on February third. There's thirty-five days to close, so it would have to close by March tenth, so therefore we will need an extension to continue to the next meeting.
Yes, and we spoke about that earlier. We're going to add that extension today at this meeting and follow up with an email.
Madam Chair, can I propose that we continue the public hearing to March seventeenth? Now with the extension from the developer?
You have a motion, is there a second?
A second.
Okay, uh, we have a motion and a second, uh, to continue the public hearing. Those in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
Hi, you're welcome. That is my line. If the other person wants to announce it now, I'm not talking about it.
Um, okay, so, uh, earlier we, um, filed, uh, agenda of special permit application. Dr. Martin, Pope, John Fee for business offices of Pro Natural Home Care. Twelve sixty-three, Earl Intern, by today, need a SPDV zone for rules of regulations per section sixteen. Is there anybody present to present on this application? No, right?
No, no, you're just asking if somebody's hearing that it was funny, if there's no representation.
Do you have a motion or just?
I'm not sure about that, please. I just want to make a motion to, to reschedule.
Make a motion to reschedule.
I'll second.
Um, so, uh, motion to postpone, um, those in favor? Hi.
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 Christine, I cut you off.
I did. You're welcome.
I'll go with Bart.
Okay, next on the agenda, uh, under old business excavation permit of Stan Conan LLC for the excavation. One thousand nine hundred and seventy yards, two yards, uh, two eight point two acres at lot seventeen dash two, one thirty-three, dash ten, four oh one, Burland Street, Burland. Burland Zone Regulation, such and these. Motion?
As far as comments, I think they have a period good. Sounds like they could be willing to put coverage back in the period. That's allowed, you know, that the site will allow. They can't guarantee victory, but it seems like they're trying to be, they're gonna be able by, you know, reestablishing that. I think that's good, so.
Seeing as it is a residential area, that we ask that their truck chargers do not use jake brakes or engine brakes while traveling through residential neighborhoods.
Use the, use the Burland Street on, on the street.
Okay, so, so there's no questions? Maureen, you got that, or do we need to restate the motion?
I can listen to the tape as well, for that one. I will likely, because I don't know those brake names off the top of my head, so.
Do you want to add any staff comments?
Yes, including staff comments.
To restate is also one thing.
Okay, I would make a motion to, um, approve, um, the excavation permit with the restrictions on the jake brakes of the trucks in the residential areas as well as subject to staff comments.
Use of Burland Street on me too, or?
Yes, use of Burland Street on, correct, that's what I'm saying.
Uh, is there a second?
A second.
I'll second.
Joe.
Sure.
Joe, okay, so. We have a motion and a second, um, all in favor? I, I.
Hi.
Right.
Uh, none opposed?
Steve, Steve talked.
He talked earlier.
You've been taking all my fire, Tim. You don't give me a chance.
Well, put your picture on, baby.
Okay.
That was unanimous?
Yes.
Yes.
Everybody is not.
You're good, Maureen.
Thank you.
Um, and let's see. We're good to go because everything else has either been postponed or continued.
You need a motion to adjourn?
I do.
I make a motion to adjourn.
We have, we have, the only announcement I have is in your package, you'll see that the Connecticut Federation of Planning and Zoning Agencies annual conference, um, notice has been distributed. Um, I actually didn't read it yet, and just noticed that it is on thirteen March twenty-fourth, which I believe is a POCD meeting, um, committee meeting. But, um, that option is there as well to attend that and/or subject to whether that meeting.
You haven't gone on last, so you're, because COVID.
Maureen, Maureen, can we, if we, um, decide we're all going to go to a conference and have a party, woo-hoo? Um, can we move the POCD meeting?
Uh, we can try to do that.
All right.
I, oh, I was going to say, I was going to try for knowing, realizing that we were discussing having another joint meeting again with the Affordable Housing Plan Committee, um, that was in an email sent this week with staff. And, um, I don't know where that lands, but I'm suspecting that the twenty-third is probably a budget meeting that's going to conflict with that having that being too. So I don't know what meeting auction dates are, but we'll send it out if that's the case. And if not, if you're ready to do it, the twenty-third or another day with the POCD, email.
And this is covered by the, uh, planning and zoning?
Yes, the, the fee for it should be in our budget.
What did he say?
It's usually served family style, I can't remember what they serve. It was too many years ago now that we've had it canceled so many times.
This is on the back.
Oh, it does.
It's, it's, isn't it usually at the aqua turf? And it's actually a very nice affair. You just have to buy, you know, the meal's provided. You have to do the bar. So let's, i- is, do we know who's speaking or what the topic is?
Brian Miller.
Brian Miller speaks.
Don't tell me it's affordable housing, I'll throw up.
Affordable housing.
I didn't say that.
So we have a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
I have the motion. Are you doing the second? What is the chair, what's the chair calling?
Um, I, we have, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Uh.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi, thank you.
Have a good night, everybody.
Guys, thank you. Good night. Get some rest, get some food.
Hi.
Who was the second?
Brian was the second.
Can't you tell he's got his coat here?